Okay, it is now six thirty-one. We're gonna call this meeting of the Lawndale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask the city Assistant City Clerk to give us the roll call, please.
Yes. Mayor Protem Cuevas. Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman.
Here.
Mayor Pullen Miles.
Here.
All present. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're gonna invite Councilwoman, Mayor Pro- Former Mayor Protem Councilwoman, Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman, to lead us in a pledge of allegiance, followed by Pastor Eddie Vargas of Restoration Life Church. He will lead us in a word of inspiration.
Place your hand over your heart and recite along with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Please remain standing.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members and staff. I'm reminded of a portion of Scripture where a church planter by the name of Paul, who was an apostle, writes a letter to a young man by the name of Timothy, who he plants in a really multicultural city by the name of Ephesus. And he plants him in this really peculiar place to do a really good work there in the community and in the city. And it's very diverse, much like our city is. And I just love what he wrote to him in this letter, and I'd like to read it to you, just a very small portion of Scripture found in a letter in First Timothy, Chapter two, verse one. It says, "First of all, then I urge that supplications and prayers, intercessions and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet, godly and dignified life in every way. This is good, and if it is pleasing in the sight of God, our Savior, who desires all people to be saved and to come to the knowledge of truth. For there is one God, and there is one mediator between God and men, and that man's name is Jesus Christ, who gave himself as a ransom for all, which is a testimony given at the proper time." I love that Paul tells this young pastor that it is your responsibility to pray for those that are in leadership in the city that you serve in. And I just want you to know that I myself and the Restoration Life Church family are so honored to serve the city of Lawndale for over a hundred and three years now. And we continue to serve in a very diverse community, praying for peace, wisdom, and unity. So let's just go before the Lord and pray for that very thing. Heavenly Father, first and foremost, I thank you for all the leaders here in the city of Lawndale. Lord, I pray for wisdom, for discernment, and I pray for blessing over all of their families. Lord, I pray for our city and our community. I pray for unity, for peace, and for love to make a way for everyone to live in harmony. We pray, Father, for our Sheriff's Department, our Fire Department, and all those that serve our community with love, truth, and grace. I pray that you strengthen us in this new year. God, that you give us favor here in the South Bay. And God, that you continue to raise up a new generation of leaders to lead the way in love, grace, and truth. And for that, we thank you, and we ask you for this. In Jesus' name, amen. God bless you.
Thank you, Pastor, for those words of inspiration. Let's hear now from our L.A. County Sheriff's Department. Let's hear our public safety report.
Good evening, council, and happy new year. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for December twentieth of last year to December through January seventeenth of this year. The first event was on January twelfth at approximately five thirty P.M. deputies responded to the forty-one-hundred block of one hundred and sixty-third Street regarding a disturbance call for service. And then upon their arrival, they determined that a residential burglary had occurred at the location. And they located the suspect after a search through the neighborhoods and arrested that person for residential burglary. The suspect was not a Lawndale resident. On January thirteenth, there was a disturbance at the one-five-eight-hundred block of Prairie Avenue. It was a business disturbance. The deputies located the disturbing party, and after a short investigation learned that he possessed personal identifying information belonging to others and arrested him for identity theft. That person was also not a Lawndale resident. And then Lawndale residents have voiced their concerns regarding vehicles speeding through residential neighborhoods, vehicles equipped with modified and loud exhaust, vehicles with illegally tinted windows, and people using the public roadway for their own racetrack. Deputies responded by providing high visibility, patrols, and enforcement. Deputies issued citations for vehicle code violations, including unsafe speed, modified exhaust, tinted windows, and reckless driving. Approximately ninety citations were issued during the reporting period. And that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have.
Yeah, so are there any questions? Yes, ma'am.
First off, thank you for having that number of ninety citations written. And I applaud you and your team on doing that great work for us. I also want to take the opportunity to tell you that when I first met you, I challenged you and said to you that our residents were concerned that we were not seeing visibility from the sheriff's cars in our residential area. And in one week, three different residents, who the three of them I don't think knew each other, all stopped me and said that you have reappeared. And so I appreciate that, and I want to tell you thank you to you and all the officers for once again appearing in our residential areas. They feel it. They know it.
Well, thank you. I will let them know. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, thank you for the report. Thank you. Let's hear now from our L.A. County Fire Department Platoon Chief Mike Lewis.
Yes, sir. Good evening, council. My name is Mike Lewis. I'm the duty battalion chief for our C platoon here in Lawndale. Our statistics are a summary of December two thousand twenty-two in which we've recorded two hundred and forty-nine responses here in Lawndale. Of that, seventy-one percent of those responses were our EMS-based. It's about a hundred and seventy-eighth of those responses. And the remaining responses are in three categories. We do report one fire, an area where we had what is called good intent. That's where the resources did respond after receiving an nine-one call but were canceled and returned to quarters. They did not arrive at the scene. And then also, we've had a few several false alarms where a fire protection system activated either in a household or a business, but it was deemed that the activation was accidental. Other than that, we don't have any other items to report. I'd be happy to entertain any questions from the council.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the report?
Thank you for the report. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is oral communications. Oral communications is when you have the opportunity to speak to this board on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to this board on items that are not on the agenda, if you line up by the flag, when it becomes your turn, if you would come to the podium, if you would start with your name first, we would appreciate that. At about two minutes, two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on. That'll give you the signal to start wrapping things up. That's our first speaker.
Hello, and good evening. My name is Michelle Pino, and I work just right across at the library, Lawndale Library. And I'm just here to give you guys some announcements of some of the programs we're having at the library. So for children, we continue to have our story time on Thursdays from ten-thirty to eleven. Earlier today, we had our family night, which has really been a success at the library. We just do different activities for them and show movies. And I've had families saying how happy they are because we met a family who they live in a motel right now, and they really don't have any type of entertainment. So we're very happy that we're able to provide that for them. January twenty-fifth, we're gonna have an activity with the children. They're gonna be creating Chinese paper lanterns to celebrate Chinese New Year. Every Saturday, we continue to have our creation station, which is just anybody can drop in, and we have open-ended crafting. And we have book club for the kids all through the month, and they can come and check out the book and take an activity for them to do at home. For teens, we have a hangout hour, so we try to give them a break after school so they can come in. They do, again, different activities in craft at the library. January twelfth, we had our color therapy session. So again, this is just an hour for them to take a break from studying and in school. And this coming Thursday, January nineteenth, we're gonna have our first teen book club, and it's gonna be a book and a movie. So they have to read the book and watch the movie. And when they come to the discussion, you know, they have the opportunity to kind of let us know if they like the book better, the movie. So trying to take a different approach in the book club for them. And the last Thursday of the month, January twenty-sixth, we're gonna have our teen advisory board, where teens get to help and shape the future of the teen activities in the library. So we invite all the teens to come to that, and that's from four to five on January twenty-sixth. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I just wanted to go over a couple of quick things, but I brought pictures tonight. So anyway, we talked about the street, Kingsdale and one forty-seventh, still not done. Here's a photo. And that was going from back to October when you brought it up, and I brought it up now a couple of times. Still not taken care of. Also, on my street, there was a sign that was no outlet, which was hit, bent the metal pole, so then they left it like this, with this sticking out for a couple of months. Two little toddlers live in that house on the corner. Can you imagine if they fell on that thing? At least put a cone up. I know people, again, city was advised of this, very potential hazard. But now, a couple of days ago, somebody, I don't know if it was the city or somebody else, came and sawed it off all the way to get it out of there. Not sure if they're gonna put a sign back up or not. I was also gonna talk about the potholes on one forty-seventh, but they've been filled when I just came over tonight. So that part's great, because they were pretty deep. And these two photos are... And also, there's some potholes, I believe, on one sixty-six between Firmona and Gravilla that are pretty bad, too. If you guys, I don't know if that's been taken care of. Also, real quick, I just wanted to know what the protocol or policy from the sheriffs is. If somebody gets arrested and they have an animal, what happens with the animal? Do they call animal control, or what do they do? There's an issue that's been on next door that, yeah, I'm sure you guys are aware of it, but just out of curiosity, because it is kind of interesting. So anyway, that was it. And if you guys want these photos, you can have them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Gary Wright, Lawndale, California. I'd like to talk about a couple of issues. One of them is bootleg businesses in residential areas. It's not fair to those who are paying taxes, fees, insurance, and have businesses. Mayor, you know who I'm talking about. I've also told the city manager about it. He just changes his ways. It's a cat and mouse game. Now he's doing his stuff on the weekends when you're not open, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, or very, very late at night. Does his work now on city streets. And sometimes they come knocking on my door late at night, wanting to know where he is. It's scary. He doesn't have to deal with disposal of chemicals or parts. He doesn't follow the rules that pet boys and other auto body shops and stuff have to do. Furthermore, I'd like to talk about the green line. I live right there next to the railroad tracks. I remember going to William Green School, the first meeting I went to. They told me they didn't care about my property values going down. Well, you know, we're retired. Our property values is part of our retirement. But they said they didn't care. I believe them. They say there's gonna be ninety-six trains a day will be going by. It makes more sense to go down a business district, I believe, to give our businesses some publications and stuff of people looking at and seeing, hey, there's a furniture store. Maybe I'll stop there. But you're not gonna get that down the railroad tracks. All you're gonna get is the same thing they did down in South Central. You're gonna get couches, trash, and even when they said possible landscaping, it's just a lie. They're just acting like just a bunch of liars, cheats, and thieves. They're gonna take away money from us, from our property values. And since I got a little time left, Jalen Daniels was the quarterback from Lawndale High School, and now he's a quarterback at Kansas. He did a great job this year. I just wish they'd give Jordan Wilmore the barrel more often wherever he's playing now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Alejandro Giri. Vote over, and I live here in Lawndale. I'm here to ask for accountability on our park, on our reinforcement agency, from as low as the field officers who are commanding ranks. There's been a lot of parking citations being given out by school side areas, whether they're doing it for opportunistic or safety or not. There's some few clarifications that they should make and connect with the community. I would like to emphasize the fact that the city of Lawndale right here holds up in partnership with the community, and there's a lot of vague or gray area when it comes down to the district of school with our city enforcers. So, you know, I just wanted to point that out. I also wanted to share a section where there's a violation of an officer while he's doing a citation. So on December, on December seventh, two thousand twenty-two, around eight-ten in the morning, right in the corner of one fifty-third and Firmona, and Officer Lua, while giving a parking citation, was also illegally parked in the red section. His vehicle number read, number read five-one-four, if I'm correct, it's five-one-four. His license plate was one-five-eight-seven, one-five-eight-one-seven-four-three. And that's part of the accountability, whether it's the high ranks or the low ranks. This is, this is an ongoing frustrations among our community, and we want something. Not only we want to be hurt, but we want the right things to come out of it. I understand there's gonna be safety on any parts of it, but where's the communication with our enforcing and park, law enforcing, parking, commanding officers, and our leaderships, and our family, and our community? I am hoping that they can start reaching out. They can start looking at details like that where it's not right for our officers to solicit in a way they're policing instead of reinforcing what's actually more accurate by law. And thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the past several years, I have been requesting the reports from organizations that sell fireworks for the Fourth of July. I appreciate Ms. Hall, Assistant City Clerk, fulfilling my request for these documents for the financial reports filed by December first, two thousand twenty-two. After last year's fiasco with four of those organizations failing the audit, it was hoped that these organizations would be more compliant in how funds were spent. The law states that failure to meet requirements by any organization should result in being barred from selling this year. The council ignored the law last year and gave them a pass. The Chamber of Commerce only provided receipts for a chamber carnival in Alondra Park in April two thousand twenty-two, the Fourth of July four sales. It is unclear how these expenditures meet with requirements for this year with the S E S proceeds. Last year, the Chamber failed the audit for two thousand twenty-one by only spending fifty dollars for Halloween candy. What happened to the rest of the money for two thousand twenty-one? Out of over twelve thousand of the funds to be dispersed this year, it appears the chamber has made no appropriate expenditures from the July four sales. Again, they are not in compliance to be allowed to participate in these sales. Christian Heritage Church spent only eleven thousand three seventeen out of twenty-nine thousand two eighty-five, which is another failure to comply as they spent less than the required fifty percent. Lawndale Foursquare Church was not date stamped as required. They appeared to have spent fifty percent of proceeds for a youth retreat. It is hard to determine for the breakdown of the Lawndale Little Lake how funds benefit the youth of our community. There are almost four thousand of receipts in Spanish to fix men and women's bathrooms and other maintenance work with no address or justification. Was a permit needed for the work they did? There's a catering invoice for forty-three hundred dollars for four hundred and ninety-three plates of food. How are these expenditures essential to the community? The Rotary Club provided a clear breakdown of how their funds were spent for youth groups and charitable projects. They actually spent more than they reported in our initial reporting in September. After filing their initial report late, the second report was not date stamped. The Westland Church also provided a breakdown that clearly shows how the funds were spent. Again, the fireworks sales financial report is not date stamped. The format used by the Rotary Club and Westland Church for reporting should be required of all organizations. There are specific deadlines in the code as to when these forms are required. Failure to report timely results should be, should by law result in an organization being banned from sales for a period of time. I've asked the finance department twice for clarification as to what happened on any missing date stamps or documentation as to when the forms are received. Based on last year's failure of four organizations to pass the financial audit, their fireworks proceeds, all the organizations should be audited again. The question becomes, will the city council actually...
Your time has expired.
Will the city council actually hold violators accountable? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello. Just want to congratulate Suarez and Kearney. I haven't been here since, so congratulate on your reelection. One of the things, sorry, I have a few things, gonna be three, three topics that I want to bring up. One is just tagging going around. We're getting S thirteen all over our blocks. It doesn't seem like there's no accountability, and some of the tagging that's been left around is just staying up for, it's been probably like two months for some of the taggings I've been seeing. When we call, it just seems like it's just nothing's, nothing's happening. No one's coming out to fix, remove the tagging. Or when they're painting, they're not even matching the paint. They're just... So our city is starting to just look trashy. That's one of the things I wanted to bring up. Another thing is for our house permitting. Like I said, I've been here quite a lot for the same thing over and over and over. My daughter just had a year on the fifth. I started planning when I had found out that my wife was pregnant to add on to our house. So we're well over a year, and there's just no accountability when it comes to the city. I've been going over and over trying to do it the right way and add on to my property, and it's just taking so long. One of the things that I just followed up a month ago was Tim Chen. He got promoted, and no one decided to say, hey, Sam's file is still on the desk. Let's get it to someone so they could fix it. Instead, I had to call and find out that no one's been working on it because Tim Chen's gone, and it's very frustrating. Like, how do you expect people to do the right things in our city and follow your guys' policies, and you guys don't hold yourselves accountable when it comes to doing your job? So I'm still very frustrated and angry about that. You guys are actually leaving us no choice. We have, we're gonna have to take legal action against the city. It's something that we didn't want to do. Another thing is when it comes to the deposits. For the city deposits, when you give a deposit, the city needs to provide a receipt with what they did, what they held, what they're charging for. How can you give someone a blank check and they and they say, okay, I got, just off my own experience, I gotta, I let, talked to, I forgot her name right here, sorry. I spoke to her on the phone, and she stated, oh, you owe money. And then all of a sudden, after I, I'm angry, I get a check back with money that I wasn't even expecting, which is good news. But how do you go from owing money to getting money back? It's just there has to be a process of how you know what you're gonna get, how you know what's built correctly, and then how do we know that you're holding the truth? Lastly, I think that people should be...
Your time has expired.
People should be refunded automatically. They shouldn't have to ask for their money back. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Rafael Barco. I'd like to talk about time back in nineteen ninety-six. I used to get up at four in the morning, go down to your train station, Metro, get to school, two hours, and then come home, eleven o'clock at night, another two-hour trip home. I'm like, wow, this is long. Didn't want my sister to take the metro because, you know, my sister, she took the car. I'm like, all right, I'll take the metro. I did it for one year, and then after that, I said, I gotta find another way because I'm losing four hours of my time. So I ended up getting a car. Finally, I saved some money. And I was like, this is great. I got three more hours to study, to work, to make more money. This is good. I can help my family. And so it was very beneficial. But I only stayed there for one year. For twenty-seven years, I haven't used it since, only for maybe certain occasions, helping out with the school and the community. And I'd like to reconsider the metro green line going through the neighborhood. I believe it'd be more beneficial to go on a different route because going through the neighborhood, it's gonna be more compact. It's already tight right now with the parking, and then adding an extra filter is gonna be a little tight. I know on Hawthorne Boulevard, you have businesses. Back in the days, I know Hawthorne Boulevard used to be a little commuter train in the middle, and they used to actually, you know, have people go to businesses and shops, and that was a really great idea. And me and a colleague, Gilbert Saldivar, we actually worked on a project with UCLA, and we collected data from Metro, and we compiled it. We used our studio and we programmed it. The interesting thing was like, what does the data look like? What can we tell from it? Let's go ahead and make a graphic. We found a lot of interesting information that the green line by the Costco station went down dramatically, by thousands every year, starting in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. Like, why is this happening? Well, you know, Uber comes up, Lyft comes up, other modes of transportation came up. And I'm like, it really doesn't take us much anywhere, as the other lines have taken us, next to the heart of Hollywood or Staples Center. So maybe as a suggestion, it'd be better to maybe think of or relocating where the metro line should go, not down the city or the railway where the houses are and the residential. And I believe, I believe going down Hawthorne Boulevard might be a better option, just to bring businesses and bring people to the businesses. And people were like, oh, I can go to the store here. I can go to the store there. And then reconsider, probably getting the message out to the community a little bit more. I know some of us not on technology. They say, oh, email them, email them. I'm like, I still want to see that paper copy, because that paper copy makes me come here. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Lawndale City Council, I bring you greetings from Assemblymember Tina McKenna's office. My name is William Mitchell. I am your new district director, and I just wanted to talk to you about a few things going on. The assembly member wants to meet all of you, and we will be having some meeting greets at the office. We are also planning a disaster awareness and preparedness fair on March fourth. We'll be holding it at the Hawthorne Community Center, and that's gonna be a district-wide fair. We're gonna have the sheriffs and Fire Department, Gas Department, everyone here to address our, with all the flooding and everything going on, we're gonna be addressing some disaster preparedness and awareness. So I just, I will be brief. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm William Mitchell. I am your new district director for District Sixty-One now, and it's gonna be a pleasure to meet and work with you over the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, and Staff, I am Ray Holler, homeowner in southwest Lawndale for thirty-six years. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you for the excellent graffiti removal program, especially for a guy named Willie who works on the weekends and Thomas on weekdays. But I really came to talk about the metro green line extension plans, and I'm going to elaborate upon the nice metro train summary provided by previous speaker and my neighbor, Gary Wright. Please help. One hundred ninety-two, that's the number you need to remember. That's the number of green line passes, times the green line passes, every stop, every weekday, starting before four o'clock in the morning or... starting before four o'clock in the morning, running all day until after midnight. It's ninety-six trains one way and ninety-six trains the other way. That's about every five minutes. One of Metro's proposals is to run two tracks along the freight train right-of-way in southwest Longdale, mostly along Condon Avenue, a quiet residential neighborhood where only two short freight trains pass every day. Metro's trains would create so much more noise than those, with those one hundred ninety-two trains per day, especially squeaks on curves, honks at street crossings with alarms, plus vibration, blocked traffic, ugly overhead wiring, walls dividing our neighborhood, years of construction and loss of privacy. All will degrade our quality of life and property values. I've been talking to fellow residents along the path and every resident I spoke to is opposed to metro trains along the right-of-way when I tell them about the one hundred ninety-two trains every day that would come. I encourage them to express their opinion to Metro and to you. I hope we can all agree that a metro green line extension through Longdale would degrade Longdale forever. This is one of those once-in-a-lifetime situations where if we do not stop the metro train, we will be reminded of that one hundred ninety-two times a day. I, every weekday. So I ask you that we, I ask that you use every available resource in our city to fight this. If we need outside help, hire it. I appreciate your meeting with some of the members of the Metro Board of Directors that advocate for Longdale. I hope you told them that the green line extension plans fail Longdale for the fundamental goal stated in the L.A. County Measure M, which would fund these trains for which we all pay sales taxes. Goals which include make public transportation more accessible, convenient, and affordable for seniors. These trains fail our goals. I'm running out of time here, so generally, I think buses are much better to achieve the goals that are stated in Measure M. Thank you so much for your service. I am Ray Haller.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment.
Oh, excuse me, Mayor. I'm sorry. We did receive an email public comment from Patsy Barunda and she is opposed to the metro green line C-line project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, we will close the public comments, bring it up to digesting comments from the council. Let's start with Councilwoman Hoffman Gorman.
Gracious, and there's a lot of things that I have to say tonight. First of all, thank you for everybody that got up to speak tonight. I really appreciate the time and energy and the commitment to come out here and take time away from your family to be here. Michelle, as always, thank you for keeping us updated on, on the activities in the library. Dina, Sean, can you respond to her about street repairs?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're still working with the contractor, Ahmadz here, Interpublic Works Director. We are still finalizing all of the surveys. Right now, it's still on hold. The city attorney's office has been involved with the contractor to get him back online to finish the rest of the road improvements. That's where we are right now with regards to that road on Kingsdale Ave. There's other roads too that Calban was working on, so they're all still on hold. I think over by Manhattan Beach, some alleys, some other roads throughout the city that were still on hold until we finalize everything with them.
Thank you. Also, is Justin still here, Lieutenant Smith?
Sergeant.
Sergeant.
He might be outside.
He might be. Maybe he-
Oh.
Yes. Do you have a minute to respond to the animal question for comments?
Don't be shy. Don't be shy.
And the question was?
There was an incident. Her question was, is when somebody is arrested, what happens to the animal that is with them?
There are a few options that we as law enforcement have is, one, we can leave the animal with somebody, a responsible party that the person wishes to have the animal left with if they're arrested inside a home. Animal can stay in the home. If there's been occasions where people are in cars and have animals in cars and are, and are arrested and they have nobody to relinquish the animal to. And if that's the case, generally, we'll call a animal control agency and give control of the animal to the animal control agency, which will then log the true owner to the animal and then they will be reunited when the person is released from custody. Those are, those are some options that we have dealing with animals.
Did that answer your question, Dina?
Well, there was an incident in Longdale and that's why it falls back on the city and the sheriffs is that he was arrested and his dog was just left behind. He wasn't handed over to anybody and he wasn't given to animal control. And his dog got lost for a few days while he was arrested and then he got up the next day luckily and one of, you know, it was a big ordeal.
Let, let me do it this way, so we won't have a back-and-forth dialogue. Now, obviously, those are the options, those are the options and obviously, something didn't go right. That happens sometimes. Unfortunately, I would imagine that your department is gonna address it so that it won't happen, happen again. But those are the two things that usually happen.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I can answer and respond for the sheriff. So there was a folk, a person that was arrested for impeding law enforcement, specifically sitting on the hood. The suspect had told, informed the sheriffs the dog was not theirs. Luckily, the sheriffs, one of the deputies picked up the dog. The dog was not left on the streets in the rain and the cold. They tried to make contact with the animal control. It was after hours, so the deputy kept the, the dog until the suspect was released the next day. The dog was not, was not unharmed, not taken away from the suspect. So the information provided on TikTok was not accurate and detailed in information. So fortunately, so far, everybody knows the dog was safe at all times.
Happy conclusion, at least for the dog.
Yeah, so, so that kind of, that kind of sums it up. I can, I can assure you that there was no dog left at the side of the road at the scene of an arrest. That did not happen. The full incident is being investigated currently to determine if policies, procedures, or practices were violated. If, if that's the case, they will be addressed. But ultimately, there was no, the animal was okay and the animal was in somebody's control at the entire time.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. White, I agree with you on the bootleg businesses as you said, that's what it is. I'm going to suggest that Sean work with you on that issue. As you know, we have a policy here in the city for vendors, like food vendors and things like this, and this shouldn't be any different than, than those particular businesses in which they're not, they're not operating legally within the city. And so therefore, city needs to, to start taking a look at your problem over there. And on the green line issue for you, I will talk about that in just a minute. I'm going to skip ahead to Alejandro Agueri. The school district and the city of Longdale City Council will be meeting here shortly. We're planning it towards the end of the month supposedly. We're waiting to hear back from the school district as to when. This is one of the issues that, and concerns that I have also as far as the parking and the, the, what, what we can do to work together for those parents that are dropping off and picking up around schools.
Is that an open public event?
Unfortunately, we can't respond back right now. Randall, we're getting there with the fireworks. Hang in there. I think Harant is doing a really good job at starting to provide us the information that we're looking for in regards to the firework vendors. Sam, I didn't have not caught, where's Sam, any of the tagging in your neighborhood. I would like to myself see it and I'd always like to encourage you to go ahead and turn it into the city. As far as the paint not matching, we only can have so many different colors of paint and that's the sad part of it. But if you're seeing something up longer than twenty-four, forty-eight hours, please turn it in to us. We need to know. We need to get it shut down as quickly as we can. Alright. Also, as far as receipts, he brought up receipts, Harant. Are we giving receipts when they're making a payment at the window?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I can answer that. So we do provide a summary receipt. We can get it to Mr. Cruz. He alluded to some of the, when Jared talked to him and let him know about the summary. After I, Jared was on vacation, I looked at some of the charges that were related to building and safety. We went ahead and removed some of those charges for him just because of the mix-up on, on the, to help him out on, on the deposits. And he received, I think it was over a thousand dollars, but I can check with Jared, make sure that we sent him a summary on the hours. Everyone should receive a summary for each hour billed for their project. So luckily, Mr. Cruz was not being charged for the planning time. His plan was expeditedly, was approved immediately, so the charges should have went down. And there were some, there was some back and forth, but that was building side because he at that point had submitted for building and safety. So we went ahead and took those charges off for him. So that's why he received the check. Because I reviewed it personally myself and when Ms. Chavez was off. So that's why he got a receipt. But we'll check this to make sure he gets a summary of the charges, of the reduced charges.
Thank you.
May I add something? Every single project does have itemized charges, so we have everything that we worked on, so we can give him a summary.
Okay.
Thank you.
William, it's a pleasure to meet you. I look forward to hearing from you often here at the city council and working with you on anything that we can assist with you. And we look forward to being kept up to date as to what's going on with Tina in the assembly. Now, metro, I think all of us are here in agreement and Longdale, I know, has had a thirty-year stance on being opposed to the metro green line. Unfortunately, this city council does not have any authority or any say-so as to which direction metro is going to choose to do. In the last meeting that the mayor and I attended with metro, they have finally begun to tell us that in the upcoming EIR, they are not making a recommendation as to which direction this commuter line is going to go through us, whether it be the residential or Hawthorne Boulevard. Longdale stands adamantly opposed on both lines. We don't want it. They did make in the last meeting, though, the comment that there's a possibility when this goes forward, they are not making a recommendation to the voting members of metro, but they are also going to include an option for not coming through Longdale at all and continuing with the buses. So I hope that helps too, but it's not Longdale. We unfortunately don't have a say-so in the matter. If we had our way, we wouldn't be getting the metro because we're not interested. I think that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Sir.
Doodle. No.
Mr. Tech Kearney.
Just two things. On the Dina with the signs, the street signs, aren't they in the process of replacing them all? Did we get a grant for that or a bond?
Yes, Mayor and Council, we're working, we're replacing most of our street signs now. I'll, I'll ask Ahmad to meet with Dina after, during the meeting to find out what that location is and see why that sign was sought out and taken on if it needs to be replaced.
Okay, the next question is for Alejandro. Mike, can you talk to him about the double parking and parking the red, parking by a fire hydrant or dropping off? I know we had an incident at one of the elementary schools where a young man got his foot ran over by a person who was double parked. That's why we have the safety, the double parking site going on. And Sam, the hotline, graffiti hotline, do you have it?
Not yet.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay. Give them a call because I call them at least once a day with stuff all around the city. Don't be afraid. Just call them. Alright, with that, I pass it on.
Okay. Councilwoman Suarez.
First of all, I want to thank everybody that came out tonight. I think a lot was spoke about, so I'll touch on a few topics. Michelle, the books I find are always better than the movie. That's just my opinion. And then we did cover the incident where the Nextdoor posting. You know, I see a lot of things on Nextdoor and just, you know, with some caution, anybody can post. I've seen stuff about myself that, you know, kind of makes me laugh a little. But, you know, so just to keep that in mind that there's always two sides of the story. And then with regards, I did want to touch on the school district and the city meeting will be a public meeting. So residents will be able to attend that as well to voice their opinion because I do believe there needs to be better communication between the two entities so that we can relay that to the residents that live near there as well as the parents that are dropping the kids off. And then with regards to the permitting, if Sean, if you want to touch on that, but I believe some of that topic is coming back in a way that, you know, we're always working on a better process and I think we're gonna be bringing some of that stuff up. But I would like to add in that report, when we do talk about it, looking at timeframes a little bit and setting the expectation for residents and for people that are applying on what to expect. And then, let me see, going down. And then with regards to metro, you know, I think Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman mentioned most of the points, but I had seen the same reports that people seem to prefer the buses. The other part that I'm concerned about is there was a new law that was passed that if there's mass transit in a community, it would eliminate the requirement for parking or something of that nature. So that's also a concern too because that would just exacerbate the parking situation. But hopefully, they go with the option of not running it at all through Longdale. But with that, I'll pass it along. And I don't know if you want to add?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. So unfortunately, we were supposed to have that item for the fees. We're bringing back the site plan, recommending reduction in the deposit as well as the flat work and the fence work. Bringing it more in line, even though the studies show, but, you know, that's up to the council that we do. We think we can still hold, hold a pretty good amount and just ask for a redeposit if necessary. We averaged it out, so we'll be bringing that forward to the council for reconsideration.
Yeah, and it's always ongoing with, like I said, with our process and, and how we assist the community. So, but with that, I'll pass it along.
Okay. Mayor Protem Quirvis.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. They all said what I was gonna, the questions, they answered the questions I was gonna ask. But thank you and please feel free to always come and talk to us. If you're at home, please join us at the meetings or email us any questions you have. We're here to answer those questions.
And I'm gonna, thank you, thank you, ma'am. I'm gonna say the same. Everyone pretty much covered what I was gonna speak on as well. But I do want to welcome District Director Mitchell. Your new post, congratulations. We look forward to working with you, closely working with the council, the council as well as the assemblywoman's office closely. I know you in passing, but now we get to work a little closer together and I appreciate that. So welcome and congratulations. And I will speak for, just briefly on, on metro because we cannot understate, you know, our dismay with the metro. Long before I joined this board, there was talks of metro. At that time, it was the green line, the green line extension coming through the city of Longdale. And of course, I quickly came to the conclusion, actually, I was at the conclusion before that because I served on what they called, it was an advisory board, service sector. And that board was basically charged with bus routes and making sure our buses run efficiently. And during that time, I came with the, of the opinion that to have an effective mass transit, you must be able to ebb and flow with the demands. When you have a fixed route such as a train, it's fixed and it's there and the cost is fixed. Whether, whether it's warranted in terms of ridership or not, the cost associated is still gonna be there. Unlike with, with buses, you can reduce the amount of buses, you can expand the amount of buses, you can change the routes or what have you based on the demands. And when we took a look at it, we came with the conclusion, we couldn't figure out why metro was insisting on having the metro green line extension, which is now the C-line extension, right? So joining the council, of course, I've joined, had the opinion that we are not in favor of having the, the metro in the city of Longdale because we don't see the benefit for the residents of Longdale. If you want to bring folks to the city of Longdale, we can do that by, by buses coming down our main corridor, which Hawthorne, which is Hawthorne Boulevard. And you could, like I say, you can have as many bus stops as you can, as frequently as you need or what have you, without disturbing the community, what have you. With that being the case, we've been a strong advocate, this council, the way, the makeup today and the makeup yesterday, you know, before some of us even on the council, for the city of Longdale to make sure that this project does not- um, um, for the city of Longdale, to make sure that this project does not adversely affect the city of Longdale. Now, for those who are not aware, Metro is a metropolitan planning organization with their own powers and authorities, a lot of power and authorities that's vested to them by the state legislature and the governor. Uh, some of these land use authorities, well, not some of them, a lot of the land use authorities supersede the, the land use authorities of municipalities, such as the city of Longdale. So, while we can be a strong advocate with our communities, the, the deciding, um, party, of course, are the members of the Metro Board themselves, right? The, all the members of the boards. And that's why we've been meeting with the Metro, um, members, to speak with them individually, so they can understand, um, how we feel about the project, so I can understand, um, our issues with the project. Not just in terms of, uh, making sure that the project is a great project, in terms of, um, reducing all of the adverse effects and the environmental impacts and things of that nature. We're gonna do that, and we're gonna stay, stand fast on that, as we have been. When that draft environmental impact report comes out, which actually, it has come out, it's out, they're gonna be reducing it pretty soon, I mean, not reducing, releasing it pretty soon, where everybody can go on the internet and you could download a copy, what have you, then they're gonna have some hearings, um, based on the comments from this Council, the public, and other, um, agencies or what have you. And so, of course, we're gearing up, as we have for the last twenty years, um, um, to fight Metro. But, we have to fight him on two fronts. If you only fight him on the front that says, "We don't want the project," you wake up and you have the project, and you realize that we could've had a better project, a pro- project that has, that has less adverse effects in the communities, if we fought him on that, that front as well. So, we have to advocate for the best project that we can get. So, in other words, if you're gonna build in my backyard, I want you to build the best project, the project that's not gonna, um, adversely affect us, a project that's gonna re- reduce noise vibration, noise vibrations, and, um, traffic impacts and things of that nature, and that's what we're gonna be looking at, um, when we respond to the draft environmental impact report. Those meetings are gonna be very crucial. We've had a lot of meetings over the years, but those meetings are the crucials. You can have as many meetings as you want, but the meetings that count are the meetings and for which are part of the record. These meetings are gonna be part of the record, like, that's why they're gonna have a court reporter there, and they have to respond to these comments, because they're gonna be part of the records. Those are really important meetings that's gonna be held at some point, probably in the next couple of months, you know, we understand the, it kinda goes, the ball is kinda be kicked down the, the road a little bit, but that's how these kind of projects are, it's been twenty years, right? And so, just know that this Council is really advocating for the public, really advocating for our residents, cause we live here, too. I live about seven houses up from the tracks. And so, we want to make sure that, that, that this is a good project, if we have to have it, um, from, can you answer that for me? She was gonna answer it, too. That's, I guess my wife don't know I'm at work, I don't, I don't know what's going on. Anyway, so, 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 yes, so just know that we'll continue to fight, and we, we want your voices to be heard, and we will definitely represent your voice, um, whether it's in our subcommittee meeting, um, with the Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman and myself, um, or the full Board, um, a- as a whole, we definitely will be advocating, as we will continue to do so, on, on that front. Oh, you know what? It's Tuesday, and she don't realize there's a council meeting Tuesday. Bear with me. I'm, I'm gonna have to put on Do Not Disturb. Don't, don't tell her I told you that. We normally have our council meetings on Mondays, so she's probably figured I'm just outrunning the streets. Okay, anyway, so, we're back, so just, just know that, okay? Let's see, what else we have? Okay, I think that's all I have. Yeah, I better call it quits at that point. Thank everyone for coming out. Okay, let's see, what do we have next on our agenda? Our consent calendar. Um, item F is a consent calendar. Item one through four. What is the, um, the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to accept as written.
Okay, the motion's been made by Kearney that we would accept the consent calendar as written. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Suarez. Any discussion on the motion?
All right. Last, please vote.
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, madam. Next item is item five on the City Council Subcommittees. Who want to take this report?
Mayor, I can, um, give the report a brief one.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure. Okay, um, Yvette Hall, Assistant City Clerk. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The report before you is pertaining to the City Council Subcommittee, um, which consists of five ad hoc subcommittees and four standing committees. Staff is seeking direction from the City Council on whether the Council would like to modify, replace, or appoint members, if desired, to the list as presented in the staff report. That concludes my report, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. Members, you see the report and the, the current committees, any, any discussions or thoughts on any of the committee assignments?
Robert, I'll just stay on two of them and delete one.
Okay.
I'll just stay on the, uh, the budget Subcommittee and the billboards.
Okay, which one do you want to delete, though?
Uh, the, uh, Joint Use School District.
Okay. Let me find that one.
Very first one.
Okay, first one. Okay. Okay, got it, okay. So, we remove you from there, that one? Okay. All right. Any other, um, comments and impressions?
I did have some, it, it's, you know, I have another forty years, so it doesn't have to be this cycle, but just for the future one, I was curious about the budget, but I think it's important that Shirley gets another, you know, if she's so interested that, but probably for the future year, I'll be asking to sit on that one, not this time around, but just putting it, you know, cause I've never served on that one, so just for experience. But, I would be interested for the, um, the joint use one.
Interested in it? Okay. Who, who else interested in the joint, the school district joint use?
I, I like what I have, if no one will oppose it.
Okay. Okay, well, let's, well, let's stick with the, the school joint use, so.
That would be.
Let's appoint Cu- um, Cuevas to the, not Cuevas.
She's already on.
She's already on.
I'm on this side now.
You're on that side now. Let's appoint Suarez to it.
Señora.
So, we appoint Suarez to the, at. Okay. So, with, uh, take Kearney off, he'll retire, and then we'll appoint, uh, Suarez.
Retired.
And we'll appoint Suarez, um, to the school district, um, park maintenance joint use ad hoc Subcommittee, that's a lot. Okay. Well, what about, um, the, the other one? So, there's two related. Okay, let me take that back, the southern is for something else, you want to stay on that one, okay? Okay. What else we got?
I'm fine with my other ones, yeah.
Okay. You okay with?
Yep.
Okay, let me look at mine. Sea Line.
Oh, will the teen center continue?
Yeah, 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 that'll continue, yeah. Okay. Okay, it sound like we're gonna keep everything the same except for, yeah, she indicated that she was okay, right, yeah. Thank you. Um, we're gonna keep everything the same except for the city school district park maintenance, and we're gonna, um, take Pat Kearney off, uh, Madam City Clerk.
And add Bernadette on.
And add Bernadette Suarez on, and the rest will remain unchanged.
Thank you.
And now, what do you need that in? Do you need a, that, a motion for that, or can we do that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we need a motion.
Okay. Can I entertain a, a motion to, um.
So, blue.
To make those changes?
I'll second.
Okay, the motion's been made, that we make, um, said changes and keep the rest of the committees unchanged. Uh, motion made by Kearney and seconded by Suarez. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the Council, please vote.
Come here, phone. Come here, phone.
Y'all women don't give up. I tell you what. And you know it's important, cause she, guess what she's asking me? Do you want anything for dinner? That's an inside joke, everyone knows me and, and my dinners up there. Everybody know, the answer's always yes. Okay. Let me see how I can turn this off. I don't want people disturbing it, this is a new phone. How do you turn it off? Oh, okay, here we go. All right, let's continue. Sorry for the interruptions. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is.
We didn't finish the motion.
We didn't finish the motions? Okay. Oh, I was, I was, I was really interrupted, huh? But, we did have a, a motion maker and a second, or is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Will the Council, please vote?
For item number five, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, madam. Next item on our agenda is a thank you letter to Congresswoman Maxine Waters concerning the omnibus appropriation funding for our youth development center.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm happy to bring this to you. A few months back, uh, you know, coming back to the city of Longdale, um, we, I talked to Public Works about applying, we found out about some possible funding from, uh, from Congress, so we applied for it. We put in the information that was requested, and I'm happy to report to the Council that, um, the omnibus was signed by Congress and the President, and we received four million dollars for the teen center and another, uh, one million dollars for the sign replacement, uh, program throughout the city of, uh, throughout the city. Totaling five million dollars. And with that, uh, we want to thank, um, Congresswoman Maxine Waters for, uh, pushing this through for us, and so attached you have, uh, staff's draft letter. Uh, we're looking for any changes you would like to see, any feedback if necessary, or, uh, direct staff to move forward and, um, send the letter to the Congresswoman.
All right.
And that concludes staff's report, thank you.
Thank, thank you for that report. Anyone wants to speak on this item? I'll speak on it. Yes, we are so excited to get, um, the four million dollars for a total of at least, at least eight. So, when we first started off, we received, uh, four million dollars from, from the state budget, um, courtesy of, of our former Assemblymember, and we were, um, resided to do a, a nice project, um, for, for our youth, um, youth development. We're also gonna have our municipal services department in there as well, and cable, but, uh, uh, youth department. But, we are excited and delighted that, um, our Congresswoman was able to, to bring home, as I used to call it, the bacon. You haven't heard that in a, in a while, in, um, in Washington, um, but we're delighted that we're able to get, um, additional four million dollars for this youth development center, to really have a nice, um, project, um, to serve, um, our youth. Not only our youth, I'm gonna say our, the youth of the surrounding communities as well, because we know our surrounding communities, um, our youth, you know, they participate here in Longdale, as well as Hawthorne, and Hawthorne is here in Longdale, and, you know, and, and we want to make sure that we bring the services where they are and stuff, so that's why I'm excited about this, and yes, it's definitely, um, fitting to send a letter, um, a thank you to the Congresswoman, um, Waters, uh, for this funding. Anyone else want to? Okay. In the letter, you just make it, make it pretty, you know, you know what to, you know what to say.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Do we need action, Mr. City Attorney? Okay, we'll move forward with the, with the item for the director of City Manager, send out the letter, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Number seven is Longdale Youth Development Center slash Municipal Services Department.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, good to see everyone tonight. So, I'm here to give a report on item number seven, Longdale Youth Development Center slash Municipal Services Department Building. You know, I've been here almost sixteen years now, and when I first got here, Municipal Services was in a house next to the community center, working out of that house, and then the house got bulldozed to make way for the community center. And then, we were working out the old LA County Health Building, which is now Municipal Services and Cable, and then we did the land swap for the library and all that stuff. Then we, when we moved out, we needed somewhere for Municipal Services to go, we moved to the community center, my department, Community Services. Municipal Services went to the county building, where they're at right now. So, the bottom line is they've been displaced a number of times, I don't know how many times before I got here, uh, don't know the history, but, uh, the bottom line is the city has long had a desire for a teen center. We want it to be called the Youth Development Center, to give it more of a broad, I, I guess, a broad range of, of people that would attend and different things we can do in that building. Uh, the potentials are, i- is endless, and also Municipal Services Department Building, so, long been desires and needs in the city, and I'm here to kind of wrap everything up, uh, with all these grants and all the money that we have, to kind of put things in place for you folks, so you can help us make some decisions tonight, if it's, uh, based on footprint or elements, whatever it may be. Then, we can finish our work in the Community Services Department and get the grant packets to the state, and then, in return, get a contract. So, that's just kind of a brief introduction, I'm just gonna wrap up all the funding here. We have four buckets of funding, only three are mentioned in the staff report. So, the one that, uh, Mayor Pullen Miles was talking about was a, uh, uh, they call a legislative ad from the Calis- California State Legislature for the multi-use facility, and this certainly qualifies as a multi-use facility. The grant was in, was, uh, for the amount of four thousand dollars and administered by the California Natural Resources Agency, and this is basically under Senate Bill 170, how we got that, these funds coming our way. So, that's one bucket of funding. Typically, you know, when the state has money, or even the feds have money, they use the, uh, state agency as a clearinghouse or the administering agency, that's how California Natural Resources Agency comes in, they're just holding the money and they're distributing the money when we qualify for it. The, uh, ma- the mayor actually talked about both of these, but the one we recently got was, uh, uh, earmark from the United States Congress, one hundred and seventeenth, also a push-through by Maxine Waters, as was mentioned before, for a multi-use facility, the request was for four million dollars, uh, under HR 2617, that's the legislation that the funding falls under. Right now, we don't know who the administering agency is, I've been told about two months from now, it'll take, we'll, we'll get information on who's gonna administer, uh, the grant, who's gonna provide the paperwork, who we're gonna be dealing with, uh, till we bring this home across the finish line in maybe three, three to five years. Real quick, going back to deadlines, the Senate Bill 170 funds, which is, uh, from the California Legis- Legislature, that has a encumbrance deadline of March first, two thousand twenty-six, so we have some time. We don't know what, uh, the funds from HR 2617 are gonna be, I suspect it'll probably be a year behind, maybe March two thousand twenty-seven, which is good, to have money that's staggered, so you don't have to use it all a- at one time, and you can kind of adjust the project as you go along. Uh, the other third bucket of funding that we have is Measure A funds. Uh, Measure A was voted in by the California taxpayers, uh, in two thousand sixteen, so these are Los Angeles County funds, uh, administered by the LA County Recreation Parks and Open Space District. Uh, that money's been building for years, we're actually, uh, rat-holing that money, we're saving that money for this one big project, we were gonna use this money on other things, but this is a big project, we need to have every penny that we can to get, uh, to get this project off the ground and to finish. So, right now, we have about eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in Measure A funding, that will increase about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand per year, which will put us at about nine point three in, in FY two thousand twenty-five and twenty-sixth. And that money is unrestricted in terms of when we can use it, we can use it now, we can use it later. The third bucket of money that we have, that I didn't put in here, because it's not related to the project, it's basically pre-project funds, it's tap, tap L- LA County Tap Allocation Funding, uh, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, that will be used towards designing, planning, architectural, we use all that money to get everything in place, it won't be used towards the project. So, that's really kind of a brief explanation of what we're doing now. I came up with a couple designs here, uh, in your packet, and I want to just briefly refu- refer to them, and you folks may want to know what you do with this project already, but we have two, two options that we want to present. One is a really simple design, which makes a lot of sense, they both make a lot of sense, the other one is more like a Cadillac version, which has more elements than the first. So, the first one we're talking about is this handout here, the conceptual area, number one. It basically uses the existing footprint, uh, the existing footprint of the property, the property footprint, which is approximately about sixteen thousand eight hundred feet. Okay, so this is a really simple design, uh, if you look back, uh, on the back page If you look back on the back page of that or the next page, it actually has kind of a, my little arts and crafts project that I put together just to kind of show the project footprint. So you'll see that the boundaries of this project will be Buren Avenue to the east, Gravilla Avenue to the west, the Municipal Services South property line to the south. And then to the north, it would be to the south curb line of De Oro Avenue. So it's this one right here. It's just one piece of property with many things that we can do there. What we're suggesting for this, these aren't final plans. These are just suggestions, just to get the wheels turning. Obviously, the architects and the designers will decide, and you folks will decide what elements we'll have. But we're looking at a building face and a setback area on the east side of the building facing Buren Avenue. And then we're looking at the Youth Development Center and the Municipal Services Department building right there on site. And we're potentially looking at a two-story building. I think we will have enough funding to have a two-story building, teens or youth development on one floor and then Municipal Services on the second floor. Probably want to have the teens below. But anyways, that's something to be designed, to be discussed later. So that is, is, that's the simple, the simple solution right there. And I think with the money we have, we'd be able to do almost anything we want to do at that location. Also, what we have to think about is parking for that location. So, you know, just doing some really rough estimates, we could have a teen center building that's about 16,000 square feet. I'm looking at a two-level building of about 8,000 square foot each. And then a parking lot, an external parking lot, probably not covered or anything like that. Those get expensive, but a parking lot of about 6,000 feet. So that's our number one version right there. If I can go along to the number two version, this is kind of like the Cadillac version, and, you know, you put a Parks and Rec guy in charge, and he's going to try to cram as much stuff as he can in there like I have done here. But no, it's a really manageable design. But it includes, this design here, it includes the same footprint of the building, which again is about 16,000 square feet for the property with the same type of elements. But it also includes a skate center. So if you go to the next page of that, you'll see how we have a little design here. And I just got a little bit creative here, is that we could do the same type of building, about 16,000 square feet, a two-level building. But if we wanted to really go big time and really provide for the teens, something that we really need in Landale is to provide a skate center. I don't want to say a skate park, because it's not going to be outdoors. We're talking about something indoors that takes it easy on the neighbors. You're looking at the terminus of De Oro Street on the eastern end where that large tree is, if you're looking at the design. Right there, we could have a teen center, I would believe, of about 7,000 to 8,000, 7,000 to 8,000 square feet for the teen center there. I'm sorry, not the teen center, I'm sorry, the skate park. We'd be looking at something that's probably about 5,000 to 6,000 square feet, okay? And then using that parking lot also against the neighbors to the north. You know, we're suggesting that, you know, it's going to be a pretty busy street. If we do want to do this and we do want to close off De Oro Street, we could make a nice little turnaround in the existing parking lot. So people coming out of the external parking lot would make a right-hand turn, then enter the turnaround, and then get on out to the west side and then out onto Gravilla Avenue. Then we don't have to deal with U-turns and people backing up and things like that. That left coming out of the community center external parking lot, which we're suggesting might be a tough left, so we might want to do a no-left-hand turn. And then obviously, people coming down that street to drop people off can do that in the turnaround. So that's just another idea. So just a couple conceptual designs here for you folks to consider. And I'm just trying to make sure I have everything here. And I think that, yeah, we probably could do this type of design if we wanted to go here with, with the money that we have, which is about 9.3 million, with hopes of getting more down the road as well. So at this point, there's no fiscal impact at this time. However, non-city funding will be available, as mentioned in the project funding sources table, on a reimbursable basis. So one of the key things is whatever we decide to do is to get this money in the budget in the future so we can draw it down from that. And then although 100% of the funding for this project will be comprised of non-city dollars, the city will have to include applicable funding in the 23, 24 budget and beyond if the project moves that fast and for subsequent years to pay architects, planners, construction contractors prior to seeking reimbursement. Staff recommends that the city council, number one, review the attached conceptual property designs. And two, provide feedback to staff regarding property design elements and relative project footprints prior to selecting one of the following options. One, approve conceptual development area one and relative project construction footprint for the eventual Landale Youth Development Center and Municipal Services Department building using the existing property footprint. So design one is option number one, if you guys want to do that. Number two would be to approve conceptual development area two and relative project construction footprint for the eventual Landale Community Development Center and Municipal Services Department building using the existing building footprint and adjacent areas of the project area. And number three is always to provide staff with further direction. So I have my notepads, and you folks can make this whatever you'd like to. If you just want to adopt a general design, that's fine. If you want to start talking about specific elements. Once again, the idea here is to get the input that we need so we can complete the project packet, which will be sent to the state. And then hopefully, this spring, we'll have a contract with the state. And then once the second pot of money becomes available, we'll do the same thing there. And then we'll be able to get a contract for the state or whoever the administering agent is during that time. I'm anticipating maybe the summer or the fall. So that concludes my report, and I'm here to listen and take notes and answer any questions that I can.
Thank you, thank you. He's smiling. Thank you for that report.
Yeah.
Let's ask any thoughts. Mayor Protea.
Mike, are we able to do a survey of, I'm over here now.
Yeah.
Are we able to do a survey? He's looking over there, so I'm like...
You used to be over there, though, right?
I used to be over there, now I'm here. A survey with the teenagers in the city, like from middle school to high school, and see what they want to see. I know a skate park or place, it's going to be possibly one of them, but I think we need to ask them what they want for their center, not just what us, what we want.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we'll do some community outreach. They can be done different ways. It could be done through a survey. It could be done through a group meeting at the community center. We bring people in and bring out the drawing boards and things like that. That would typically happen, obviously, after we have a contract with the state, after we have a design and footprint in place, after we have all the planning stuff in place, then before we start putting the elements in, yes, we could do it a number of different ways. It's not required, but it's something we need to do, because really, the things that teens are doing, they're changing every few years now. They're always getting into something new. And, I mean, when we were designing our communities, our potential teen center back in 2015, that didn't come to fruition. I mean, it's way different now than it was then. So, yeah, we're going to need them to do that for us.
Is it, if we decide, let's say, I like number two, option two, with that little cul-de-sac or whatever you want to call that little roundabout. But if we lock in, we turn in paperwork for that, could we change our mind later on and go with option one?
We can certainly amend it up or down.
Okay.
You know, because there's always a potential that, I wouldn't hope that money would be lost, but money could be lost and money could be gained, you know, so...
My second question is, you're using the garden that the library uses now. Is that something that it's going to be eliminated? Or are we finding them a different area for their garden?
That's something that needs to be thought about, because right now, the footprint does not, I don't have that as included in the footprint, but I imagine that would be probably part of the welcoming, the setback or whatever. I imagine that if, to be honest, I'm not even exactly sure whose property that is.
Okay.
I think the city let them use that property.
Yeah, it is, the city's.
Yeah. So, okay, thank you. Thank you, Pat. That's what I thought it was. So of course, we would have to find them somewhere to go with their garden if they wanted to continue it. Great questions, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can work that out. And actually, it was, I think the full title of that project was a demonstration project. I'm not sure how long demonstrations last.
Correct.
But that is part of the city.
Yeah.
Obviously, we can kind of figure out where to relocate it, should we need to.
Any other thoughts on it?
I have one. I like concept number two, but I don't want to see the parking being taken away for the residents to park there now. You know, we have limited parking right now. And I think we might have pushback from the people that actually parked there overnight. Number ones, I like number one. We can always build a skateboard park somewhere in there. And First diagram has it all the way to the sidewalk, so the garden would be gone. But also, this is only my thought. You have a name on here. I think it should be, you know, because the two ladies that got us some money, it should be the Maxine Waters Landale Youth Development Center. And I'd like to see De Oro changed to Burke Way, because Allen Burke keeps that somewhere for $4 million. I'd just see both, some have their name there somewhere. That's my personal opinion.
We'll get there.
Okay.
Future meeting. I personally like option two, and I think it might just be a little bit of sentimental, because growing up in the school districts, I don't know, I have tons of skateboarders. They would be at Will Rogers, using that area. We see them over here. I think it's a very, still a very popular hobby for a lot of the kids. And right now, they're kind of going in the streets and all, so it'd be nice to have a concentrated place for them. So I'm a big fan of that. And then I guess another question that I have, which is probably a different topic, but, you know, we're talking about putting Municipal Services and the cable. I guess I have some questions about kind of the current status of our cable department and, you know, if we're going to need so much of the space for that for the future, what we're anticipating. So that's just one of my questions, but I am a fan of option two.
Okay, option two.
Same here. I think that if we can afford to stretch it out, I don't think that, knowing the longevity of this building and what we hope is many years to come, if we have the budget to go ahead and go bigger, I think we should. And I like Surly's idea as far as getting some feedback from today's youth. Now, they might be grown by the time it gets built and not interested in it, but I do think that the younger generation, not just us up here, should have some say-so as to what we should be focused on on this.
I do have one more point. I think that even some of the adults still skateboard. Sean, can you confirm?
Yeah, he's one of them.
Why are you looking at Sean?
Is that... Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. So the council, you know, all the years I've been here, I've mentioned the option for a skate park one day. We had this opportunity, so I asked staff to look at it and want to thank the council, because I'm the one that has to go out and ask the kids to stop skating, unfortunately, and there's just no place for them. Unfortunately, Laundra Park is too far. The mayor and I've had, I don't know how many discussions over the years, almost going on seven, about having a place for the kids to actually have a, indoor, obviously, to skate. So yes, I do skate. I still, I have like, probably like 49 skateboards, maybe even more, that I still have, older-school 1980 skateboards, so, yes.
All right. Thank you for that report.
So I'm hearing conceptual design number two.
Oh, no, I haven't waited in yet.
Okay.
I got a third option. No, actually, I do like conceptual, concept two. I'm also of the opinion that when we have the opportunity, we should always go big with the budget, because the buildings are buildings. They don't, they're not going to change. They're going to be there for 100 years or what have you. You don't want to miss the opportunities, because you can always repurpose buildings, you know, whenever you need to, if you ever need to, right? So you never want to pass up the opportunity to go as big as you can, given that the budget will allow. In this case, you know, these are grant money, so I'm in favor of concept two. And it also will provide, as you know, with the indoor skate feature, I think that would definitely would be an attractive feature for the kids. I want to, and we'll have discussion later about programming. So in addition to recreational opportunities and opportunities to hang out as young adults do, right, and this would be a safe place for young folks to hang out, I'm also looking for professional development opportunities for the space to be used as. Professional development, whether it's career enhancement or career development, you know, opportunities as well, so that we can bring those opportunities. I mean, we live in LA. We live in LA County. You know, there's a whole bunch of industries here in LA, whether it's aerospace, entertainment, or what have you. And we have opportunities to bring those industries here to teach our youth, to give them opportunities to grow and to develop. So at some point, we'll get down the road where we can talk about development, programming, you know, if you will. Before the concept is concerned, I'm for concept two, because I want to see the city manager on that skate, on that skateboard, to see if he still has it, you know, or what have you.
Okay, so we'll submit...
What else you need from us?
We'll submit conceptual design number two as a starting point. And then you guys have many...
Can you make sure that the youth advisory committee is, we want to hear from them, especially in terms of the programming?
Absolutely. And, I mean, you'll have plenty of opportunities to weigh in as, as, next time here will be the contract, then it'll be other designs. So you guys will have plenty, plenty of opportunities to comment on this. And we want to get this one right. So thank you for the feedback, and I think I have enough information to go off of here.
Very good.
Oh, one more thing. Do we want to go with Waters Youth Development Center?
Let's talk about a name later. I think, I think we're not, we're not there yet.
We can, I'm sure we can change that as well, but we'll just put that in the...
They say that's bad mojo.
Yeah.
It's a bad mojo.
The name before the building.
Can you make sure...
I don't know if that's true or not.
Could you make sure there's a young at heart and mind, juror acting section in that youth center for the young at heart but holding body?
Holding body? Okay, that's almost me. Thank you.
I'm going to stay here, Mayor.
Yeah.
You're not leaving? Are you refusing to leave? Okay, so you're going to do the next one, okay. Solutions to the community center, second-floor outdoor terrace.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So we know a lot about the issues that have been happening over the community center, outdoor second level terrace. The purpose here, let me get to my notes here, is to restrict or monitor access to the second-level outdoor terrace, to reduce or eliminate instances of trespassing, vandalism, overnight camping, overnight congregating when the facility's closed. So, you know, the one thing I wanted to say just really briefly is when we designed this building back in 2000 and 2008, it was all about access. You know, you build a new public building, you want people to be able to access it. And that's what we did. We did not want to restrict access in any way. But since the pandemic and all kinds of other things that have been happening the past three to five years, now, when buildings are designed, they are looking to restrict access to keep out the, whatever you want to call it, the displaced individuals, people that don't have anywhere to go. So that was just the overall premise. Back then, it was common to not restrict access to make public buildings as accessible as possible. So let me get caught up here. So we went to our project architect, the original architect, Bob Coffey and Associates, and asked him his opinion on some of these ideas. And this is something the staff has talked about for coming on a couple of years. Sean and I seem to talk about this almost every weekly meeting that we have. So we've come to a lot of conclusion to this. And, you know, the bottom line is, we looked at two options. We looked at the simplest options, the lowest hanging fruit that we could. Okay, the number one, it was a failed attempt, but we figured, hey, why can't we just eliminate these two staircases to restrict access when the building is closed? Okay, so we thought that was something we could do, one or both staircases. We met with LA County Building and Safety. We can't do that. What we learned is that any outdoor space attached to a public building in excess of 750 square feet has to have two areas of ingress and egress. So we have the main staircase adjacent to Buren, that's one. We have the back staircase coming up from Buren also, but it's more towards the south parking lot. That would be the second one. So that's something we just could not do. This terrace is, I think it's about 990, maybe 1,000 square feet, so it's way over that threshold. The second thing we looked at is, let's try to maintain the original architect of the community center. Let's build up the walls to the maximum height, which is the bottom of the railing on the second-level terrace, building up the walls, matching the tile. We found out, hey, this, we didn't find out that the tile is 11 years old, we know that, but we found out that it'd be impossible to match this tile. And one thing we don't want to have is a building that sticks out like a... And the one thing we don't want to have is a building that sticks out like a sore thumb, like a sore thumb. This building is beautiful, it's just, it's gorgeous. And I don't think anybody is going to like some of the changes we're suggesting here. Sean doesn't like it, I don't like it, the architect doesn't like it. We love the building the way it is. So those are our two attempts. The other attempt was to do something similar to this, to the one we talked about, we're building up the walls. And the architect had an idea of these decorative screens that are really popular in modern buildings and whatnot. We could, we could build up the screens to that level, okay? The bottom railing of the second level terrace, which is essentially the bottom of the second floor, which wouldn't look too bad. The thing that would really bad, would look really bad, I think, is, is installing high-security gates on the main staircase and the back staircase. So the architect gave us two, two options. I didn't even include option one because there's not many changes. I included option two because that's the one we wanted to go with. The only difference between option one and option two is option one said that we could install these gates at the top of the landing for the, the main staircase, or the top of the landing or mid-landing for the back staircase. So one of the big problems we have with these, with this, the space out here, is the high walls and the staircases. We get a lot of activity on that back, back staircase, a lot of things going on because you can't really see it from the street. Visibility is closed from the south and the north, it's just really hard to see anything. If the sheriffs come down that road and take a look, they're going to actually have to have to get out of their car and take a look to see if there's something going on. So we presented to you folks plan number two. So if I can just go to, and get you guys to follow me, just to save a little bit of time here, if you can go to the one that's called front elevation, okay? Front elevation, option two in red letters. This is the way it would look if we do the buildup from Buren Avenue. So you'll see the red checker bar. Okay, what we would do is we would build up, it has a cascading wall, okay? We would build it up to the top level, and this would obviously be with the decorative screens, okay? And then the security gate at the bottom of both staircases. If you take a look at the side elevation, this would be what you would see from the south parking lot. So instead of seeing the staircase going down like this, it would go straight across. Okay, so that's what it would look like from the south parking lot, that's the side elevation. As you can see in option one plan, which is real close by, maybe it's, I don't know if these are printed on double page or whatever, this is what you'll see kind of from the top, okay? So you're going to see the top, you're going to see the red where the walls are, but you're going to see how each of the gates kind of slide out, okay? The one tough one is the back staircase is according to code, we couldn't build a gate at the bottom of the staircase. Code is you have to move it out five feet so somebody just doesn't come off the stair and bang their head into a gate or something like that. So that's the one that's going to kind of, it's going to be an eyesore, it's going to kind of stick out like a sore thumb. It's not going to reach the sidewalk level, but it's going to be out away from the stairs. That's just the way code is if we wanted to go that direction. So those are the really simplest ways that I can kind of illustrate these for you. If you look at the other, the other four or five documents, they're colored documents, these are some of the decorative screens that I'm talking about. If council did want to go with this option, you can get different types of decorative screens. They can be painted anywhere you like, they can be, so people can't scale the wall, you know, we would make this project so people can't climb the wall. So that's just another option as well. This project, as it says in the staff report, if you're going to page four of four, you can see, this is resolution one A. Cost estimate for this job would be eighty thousand dollars. Once again, decorative screens on the back staircase, decorative screens on the front, and then two high-security gates at the bottom. If I can move along to resolution two, we have three different suggestions, but it's actually just one suggestion. The three suggestions are different levels of funding, different levels of coverage. But I've always thought that, and city manager agrees with me after we've discussed this for the past two months, that, you know, overnight security is another option too, that doesn't require any modifications of the building. We all love, that building is beautiful, we always all love the way it looks right now. It wouldn't look any better with these screen decorative panels, it wouldn't look better with the gates. But I just proposed three scenarios, and we are suggesting potentially armed security. Now, armed security with a vehicle can be a little bit expensive, we costed them out to about fifty-five dollars an hour. But we would, looking at resolution one A, once again, I'm on page four of four. We would talk about just, in general, we'd have to work on the weekend scheduling. And these costs are going to be high. I always like to under-promise and over-deliver, so tell you it's this much and hopefully only spend this much. So one, one model is three PM to twelve AM. Okay, we have security monitoring the community center, indoor and outdoor, monitoring this entire civic center area until the community center closes and staff goes home. Then they move out onto the boulevard, the street, whatever, they, we give them keys to the parks, they go through the city parks, they go to the public works yard, they go to the MSD building, they go, they can possibly do homeless detail out on the boulevard. That's one idea. Resolution B is just a little hybrid, it's longer hours, it's three PM to three AM. Same thing, they would do homeless detail from eight PM to three AM. The other one is, is, is resolution two C, which is the same thing, civic center and community center from three PM until eight, eight PM. We don't need any security in the morning and afternoon, staff can kind of handle that stuff. That's a different animal that you get in the daytime than you get in the, in the evening and even late night. Three PM to six PM. So from eight PM till six AM, they would do all this other stuff and try to keep the city clean. And we all know about some of the things that are happening citywide. And of course, they could only monitor city property, you know, and one of these, somewhere in here was suggested they could handle the school district properties, but that's not a city property.
Correct.
We'd want to stay away from that. But we wouldn't have them monitoring non-city property. It's just illegal, it's a good way to get into trouble. The costs are really high, you know, for, for model number one, it's about a hundred and eighty thousand, six seventy-five for a full year. The other one is two hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred for a full year. Of course, we're talking about nine hours, twelve hours, and fifteen hours respectively. And then the two C resolution is about three hundred thousand dollars. Like I said, the costs are a little bit high, we've costed them out about fifty-five per hour. Of course, we would go out to bid and, and do all that stuff and make sure we get the best possible price. But as I mentioned before, I haven't talked to one person that just doesn't love the look of that community center. And it's too bad that we're here talking about this right now because of the way society has gone. But the fact is, is we have to talk about it. And the good thing about the designs that we got done through the architect is there are designs. We own them, we can put them on the shelf, if you want to come back and do it in two years, we can do it. If you want to do it in three years, they're ours. All we have to do is put them through LA County Department of Building and Safety and get that done. But I do believe they may expire after two years. But we can keep them on the shelf in case council wants to do this later. So thank you for your patience with that, probably a little bit longer report than it needed to be. But there was a lot to say regarding item number eight. And I'd like to hear what you folks have to say and where you want to take this.
Okay, thank, thank you for that report. Any discussion anyone wants to kick off, want to share about this item?
Mr. Mayor, I want to add a couple of things. We did, I asked Mr. Reyes, because the city of Lakewood and the city of Bellflower use security, armed security. And we found out through his discussions that they actually do homeless outreach. So as an added benefit, we thought this would be a good idea for the council to consider, for consideration. Because they also can do, when staff aren't here, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, they can actually go out, these, Mr. Reyes and I can train them what to say, how to approach the homeless, get to know them and offer them services. If they don't, then move them along. I guess they're doing that in the city of Bellflower now. So obviously, this would go out for RFP if the council was so inclined. But we thought this would be a good way to address a lot of things that go on at night, as well as, instead of barring up the community center and making it not looking so friendly, this was one of the solutions we came up with.
That's a good, thank you. Yes, Mayor?
How can we come up with the three PM to, let's say, midnight shift? Why wouldn't we do it a little bit later when dusk or when the sun goes down? That's when most of our activity happens, it's when there's no daylight.
The general idea is, you folks remember, we had a security contract that ended during the pandemic for the community center. And the civic center, they patrol the whole area from three to eight. It's kind of that a hybrid, trying to put two services together at one time and try to mix them up. You're right that that type of security probably wouldn't be needed until dark. But what we really need to do is now that we're starting to get busy, the community center is starting to crop up again, and it's getting busier, the civic center is getting wild, is we feel that we definitely need security here from three to eight, especially at the community center. We have all kinds of stuff coming through there, and it's too much for staff to handle. So I just really try to think, how could we bundle this together instead of getting two separate services? Because, you know, you folks thankfully gave me enough money in the budget this year to do our own security thing. And we don't quite need it yet, I'm not just going to hire security and spend money when we don't need it. I think I'll know when we need it, and we don't right now. But as we get busier and busier, we will. I just, just my way of trying to bundle it together to have one vendor, one service, under one contract.
And then my second question is, how are we going to be on top of them patrolling the, our public areas or our, our city parks? Are we planning to do like a scanning thing where they have to reach a certain area within every hour, every two hours? Are we planning to do that or?
That makes sense, and I know some of the, some of the, how do I want to say this? The more advanced security companies, they have various apps and stuff where they can tell where people are at. At the same time, I don't know if we would have access to that, you know? But that's something that I think the technology is there. Obviously, the civic center here, like when we had them doing it, I had them patrolling every thirty minutes. I want you through this community center, around City Hall, through the parking lots, back to the community center every thirty minutes. So on a five-hour shift, you know, they're going to do ten rounds, and they're going to stop and take care of things along the way. But, I mean, that's a good question. How do we monitor what they're doing from eight PM till three AM if that's what we choose? Maybe there's some technology that can help us there.
There is a scanner or a QR code that they could scan. And hopefully, those reports will go to Michael so that he could review it, and if there's, we could control them.
We can look at that as, Madam Mayor, or Mayor and Council, we can look at that. I've seen that at different places where the, the security personnel are required to scan where they're at each location. And then we have access, Mike and Michael can have access to that, ensuring that they're doing their rounds, going to all the public parks, city parks, all the areas as well. The only place I think I'd be on the Hawthorne Boulevard where we have some outreach to do on the outreach, we wouldn't have access knowing that, but they can document that for us and give us that. And we can include that in an RFP, include all of those services.
Sure can. Very good.
I think the technology is there.
Yeah.
It's a great question, I never even thought of that.
Yes, Mayor?
So Shirley asked some of my questions with regards to the timeframe. I guess my other question is, you know, is it for one person we're looking at? Or is it, you know, does it go in cycles? How does the security, like, or what are we looking at? Or do we know kind of how the other agreements work?
This would be for one person during that time. I don't know if it'd physically be one person, but we just costed out one person for that time.
Okay. And then I guess just my other concern would be is, you know, we'd be using the ARPA funds, but those are not ongoing costs. So, I mean, I guess it is kind of like a trial, that we would have to see if it's something that is beneficial. So I guess I could see it from that perspective if we want to see, but, and then reassess since it would have to be budgeted for if it's something that's successful or, you know? And then, do you, and this might be another feature, if there's funding that we get for homeless services, can some of it be billed towards another grant or funding?
That's what we were talking about internally, I'm glad you brought that question up, we're seeing, we could use the Measure H funds.
Okay.
I did send an email to LACTA, because I guess LACTA, we open the discussions as well, they have some money, but they gave it to two other cities, I asked them for homeless outreach. We're looking at that, maybe we could pay, depending on how many hours the security personnel put into homeless outreach, we can apply that grant money. So that is definitely, we are looking at that way to offset these costs.
Yep.
So, as far as the wall is concerned, I'm a little kind of not really clear as to what that would look like. I can't really conceptualize it in, you know, in my brain, but it doesn't seem like it would be as inviting, putting up walls to any degree. At least in my imagination, without actually seeing like some type of 3D imaging or what have you. So at first glance, I would, I would think the security of option would be the best option. Although the security option would probably would be more of an ongoing, reoccurring expense rather than the wall option. Because once you pay for it, obviously you pay for it and you have maintenance. Security, of course, you know, that's ongoing and, you know, in some cases you may have, you know, personnel issues, you know, that's always surrounding when you're dealing with personnel. They may be affected, you know, good or bad or indifferent. Like, the wall option is, it's there, it's not going to, you know, it's not going to change or what have you. But before I can be able to sign up for that, I would actually need to see some type of diagram or something. I appreciate these screens, and I kind of get a little idea from the screens, but as far as the wall is concerned, it's still kind of hard for me to kind of conceptualize whether it still would look nice. If it still would look nice and inviting, of course, you know, the walls, because you don't want to, you don't have an ongoing expense if you don't have to have them, right? But at the same time, you don't want it to look like a fortress, right? You know, you don't want it to scream, you know, keep out, you're not welcome, you know, at the same time. So I don't know if we need, if you have any diagrams or want to share with, I know you don't have them right now, but I'm just.
Well, what we would do is we'd work with the architect or the company to get a design for you folks if you wanted to see something. We would actually be able to choose the type of screens that we want.
Well, if we're going to do, if we're going to do security, if we decide we want to do security, then there would not be a need for, you know, to go that, that far. If we definitely want to do security, I'm just saying that that would help me out. But I don't want to go to the expense if we already know that we want to do security.
Mr. Mayor, we also have to, because we've already signed off on Mr. Coffey's, for those drawings he provided, so we'd have to go out for RFP and hire an architect. We definitely would have to put up those, we did these all by hand, a lot of this stuff, so we would definitely have to send out an RFP.
To show what the walls would look like.
Because we don't have an architect, so we, and that's fine if that's what the council desires.
Yeah, the two things we'd have to do in addition to that is also put it through Building and Safety for approval as well.
Because I myself am having a lot of, I'm very visual, and so I can't, it's hard for me to conceptualize exactly how it's going to look.
I personally would not want to see a gate there. It's supposed to be a welcoming thing, you put a gate and it's a barrier. You're not welcoming anybody. I like the option, I know it's funds that we will have to use, but I like option resolution two B, having the three AM, three PM to three AM. That gives us a three-hour window where whoever wants to do whatever they want to do
But you do it then?
Will do it then, but I'm hoping the sheriff department will be on top of that during those three hours.
So, so unintentionally, I cut short my staff report, but I'd just like to go ahead and finish that, just, just to be fair. Going on to fiscal impact, these costs have not been budgeted in the FY two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Depending on action taken by council, budget amendment will be needed for amount as noted above. These costs can be budgeted from ARPA funds as they relate to public safety until two thousand twenty-five. So if we wanted to ride ARPA funding with this, we can, but it sounds like no longer than FY twenty-five, which is two years in advance, I think. So, it sounds a little bit better now with the IRP funding. And then staff recommends that the city council discuss the following options and determine subsequent action. Number one, renovate the community center second level terrace per resolution one A and related conceptual design at an estimated cost of eighty thousand. Number two, engage armed security services and a vehicle to patrol the Londo Civic Center and other key areas per resolution two A at an estimated cost of one hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and seventy-five. Number three, engage armed service, security services and vehicle to patrol the Londo Civic Center and other key areas in the city. and other key areas in the city per Resolution 2B, estimated cost of two thousand, forty-nine hundred. Finally, number four, engage in armed security services and vehicle to patrol Longdale Civic Center and other key areas per Resolution 2C at an estimated cost of three hundred and one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five. Or five, of course, as always, provide further direction. Thank you for letting me conclude that report.
What did Shirley say? I missed what Shirley said. Are you going from six to six?
No, I want them three to three.
Ah, three to three?
Three PM to three AM.
Yeah.
And the sheriff would, I mean, the sheriff does.
Well, I, I disagree with you, Mike. You don't need somebody here at three o'clock in the afternoon when the community center is open. You know, we have sheriffs patrolling all the time. I would have rather seen him go six to six.
That would be Resolution B, but changing the time.
Well, it should change the cost, too. So you're only doing twelve hours instead of, if you look at the hours.
Three to three is twelve hours.
Yeah, but we don't need somebody here for three PM.
Well, yeah, but we could pick Resolution 2B
Yeah.
and give them the timeframe of twelve hours that we want.
But he's saying you probably don't need twelve hours. They're gonna start at six. They don't need to end at.
Six to six is twelve, is, yeah.
I was gonna, Mayor and Council, what we could do is you guys can decide if you want the security services, and then we can bring back, or the wall, we can bring back either a proposal from architects, you know, bring that back. Or if the council want, we can just bring back RFPs and then, you know, tweak the hours around. You guys can decide at that time, but just the concept of it's out.
Okay, so we have to decide now?
Maybe just do that. We can decide, and then if the council is wanting to do that, go with the security services, we can bring something back with, you know, putting out an RFP, and then as before, the council can decide how to tweak those hours that are more optimal.
Yeah.
And then probably reduce the cost down, and then Mike and I can work on, and Michael Reyes, and then we can all work with the proposers and beat them down a little bit more on the costs, get some of the art, Q code things and some of the other things, the homeless outreach, those kind of things, too.
So are we suggesting separate contracts, community center and then citywide, or just no community center?
No, just all one, it's all one. A concept of going with security or going with hiring architects to bring back schematics for the council reconsidering.
You mean for the jail we're gonna try building over there?
For the, the.
I like the way this community center is right now. I don't want to see it changed. I don't want to see the brick wall being built up and with decorative, pretty little designs on it. That's not the community center. That's, my question is, yeah, of course.
And then just to add off, add on, if we can really look at if we are planning to do homeless outreach services with them, how we can build that to Measure H or whatever options that we have.
Most definitely. We are, yes.
That's one of the most intriguing parts for me is, you know, with our limited staff, this is a good, you know, two-for-one special, you know, that we can.
And Mayor and Council, Mr. Reyes was very happy to hear when he engaged that they were willing to do homeless outreach services, because that would give alleviate his, twice a day out in the city.
Yeah, I was gonna say, too, just, just to answer some of your questions, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, yeah, I was very happy to hear that we could certainly use the help, and that would alleviate gaps on the weekends and on Fridays when we don't necessarily have anyone here that can engage like Sean and I do. I would add, too, they do have a dispatch. It would be basically a secondary police, police department. Their primary to engage and report, but they would be instrumental in preventing graffiti, not just homelessness, but they can also interact with, with vendors that are operating after-hours, food trucks. They can pass along the information to my staff, so we could issue citations the next day. And in working with these guys before, they are very professional. There's quite a few law enforcement, former law enforcement and future law enforcement that work in this, for Southwest. So they're very, they present themselves very professionally. They keep their look very tight and tight, and they do do things as police officers would. So that would be good to work with, and as I said, they do have their own dispatch center, so that number is available to all the council. They assured me last week. Sean will have that number, all the council will have the number, so if after-hours you see anything suspect and sheriffs are delayed, they can respond right away. Just another secondary thing to add if anybody needs.
I'm sorry. Have we spoken with the Sheriff Department, with the sergeant and lieutenant to, so that they could give us their opinion of the security company and how they feel working with them together? Because they're gonna have to work together.
Correct, and only, only cursory, just because we didn't want to present this before it was approved. But in working with them at Bellflower and as Sean said, in Lakewood, the Sheriff's Department does work closely with them. They do pass information along. If they say, if they see vandals or a group of kids hanging out, they would just want it, they would contact the sheriffs and let them know. They're not responding to police calls in the same way that police officers do. They're not gonna respond to traffic accidents. They're not gonna respond to taking reports for, for someone who's lost property or suffered vandalism. They're strictly gonna be patrolling. So we can have them patrol wherever we want them to patrol. Certainly the focus would be the civic center and city facilities, but they can certainly engage the homeless, they can engage vendors, and they could, if we needed to, they can occasionally write parking tickets. So those are just some of the things we can have them do. But in terms of where they patrol, they're, they'll leave it completely up to us, and then they're, they're available wherever we want them in terms of time and, and locations.
Thank the city attorney. City attorney, you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah. I, I was just gonna say that an analysis by the Sheriff's Department is gonna be really important at the RFP time, because when the city gets proposals and the city manager and the director are going through them, the Sheriff's Department should then weigh in on all the proposers to say, you know, how they feel about each one. Obviously, there's one that staff knows is operating very well in at least two cities, but being that it would have to be an, an open RFP process, we don't want to skew it early on.
Very good. Okay, any more discussions of what is the pleasure of this body? Okay, with the security guard, you're gonna do the security, because I can't see the, I can't see that wall, so I have no choice but to go with security.
So do we have to make a motion?
Yeah, it sounded like we was looking at Resolution 2B with a modified, well, we don't even have to get into modification at the time.
In, in looking at it, even though the director typed it out as resolution, he was meaning like resolution of the problem. So it seems that the council as a whole, the direction we're getting is to go forward with the security process, do an RFP, and then come back to you for further decision-making. So we would not need a, a motion unless I have that wrong.
Okay, I think you have that correct. Is that, is that the wish of the body? Okay, you good? Okay, so that would be the, the order. You'll, you'll come back with the security.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We'll take care of that. Before I go, we'll include homeless outreach, vendor enforcement, other things as needed, as well as accountability measures included in the, in the whole, in the whole RFP.
And perfectly someone who has demonstrated that they have some interaction with homeless, because we don't want any issues.
Experience.
Experience, yeah, experience with dealing with homeless, because that's not for every, that's not for everyone. All right, all right, okay. All right, so we will move our agenda. Thank you for that report, that very detailed report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Yes, sir. Okay, so that takes us to item nine, quarterly investment report.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council members. Thank you. So presented here, we have the quarterly investment report for quarter ended December 31, 2022. Just to kind of go over the numbers real quick, the city has about forty-four point five million in cash and investments in total. Excuse me, of, of that amount, about forty million is liquid cash, meaning it's either cash in the bank or with Leif. And Leif has about twenty-three million, earning about two point zero four percent. The remainder of the investments, about ten percent or about four million is in CDs, spread out into three different groups. Basically, we have our short-term CDs, one year or less, midterm CDs, one to three years, and then long-term, about three to five years. The big majority of it, of those are in midterm, which is the three to, one to three years. So most of those were purchased in 2019, and we've also done some purchases in the last five or six months. As I said, the end of the quarter, Leif was earning two point zero four percent. The CDs that we do have, so, so some of them are old, so they're not the best interest rates. They're, we have a range of about point seven up to three point four five. And more recently, in the last five or six months, you'll see those are the ones that we bought at three percent or better. And most recently, actually, it's not in this report, but we just bought them this week, one this week, and one is closing next week. We bought two more CDs. One is a one-year, which is earning five percent, and the other is a two-year earning four point eight percent. So rates are going up. You know, Sean and myself, we do monitor this, I monitor it almost daily, and I talk to him weekly, at least weekly, if not more. And we know, we constantly bounce ideas off each other, what to do, when to invest, how much to invest. So we're constantly looking at it, trying to get the best rates for the city. So we do have quite a bit of cash, and I think in cash in the bank and as well as in Leif, we've kind of decided to stop putting money into Leif, because number one, the rates are kind of low. It's only two point zero four percent, and we can get more better at like five percent or more now. And hopefully it does go up. The only concern that is kind of out there is most investments, you know, the short-term right now is earning five percent. Once you start going a little further out, two years, three years, which I'd really like to, but those are not earning the five percent. There's a inverse relationship happening right now. And so, you know, there's a lot of theories of what that means for the economies. A lot of economists kind of agree that that's indicative of a recession coming. But, I mean, nothing for sure, but that's kind of what's happening, because it's not the normal. Normally, the long-term investments would have a higher interest rate, and right now, the longer term have a lower interest rate. So my plan, the way I see what to do is get more money into a short-term rate, so we get the higher rates. And then we'll kind of adjust and keep as liquid as we can, moving on from there. And let's see if anything else. That's all. That concludes the report, so if you guys have any questions, we're more than happy to answer.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions in the report? Thank you, Mr. Finance Director. Next is the annual comprehensive financial report.
All right. Good evening again. Thank you, Mayor and Council members. So here we have the annual comprehensive financial report for year ended June 30, 2022. The audit report was issued on December 15th, which is, you know, really good compared to what, what happened last year. We're in compliance with the state guidelines. They say that within six months is when it's supposed to be issued, so we're well within that, and we did, we did a really good job getting it issued timely. The opinion was an unqualified opinion, which means that it is a clean opinion. There are no, you know, no concerns about our financials. So just some quick facts and figures about the general fund. Revenues came in at nineteen point eight million. Expenditures were at fifteen point three, giving a fund balance surplus of four and a half million. And we closed out the year with a balance of twenty-six and a half million. So overall, you know, general fund, we're in a good financial position for the city. No concerns there, and everything's doing fairly well. So one is the audit report, so that was issued. There did issue a few other reports. I'm gonna go over those briefly right now. The first one is the report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. And in this report, they did not identify any material weaknesses. However, they did identify two, two significant deficiencies that they consider, you know, a significant deficiency is less severe than a material weakness. So it's still a finding. So we have those two, and then there is also one instance of a non-compliance. So this report had three. The first one was on segregation of duties, and this related to our payroll processing. So they noted that the payroll technician who processes the payroll also has access to make changes to the payroll data, meaning they can add and remove employees, and they could make changes to their pay rates. Normally, they want to see those two between the actual processing of payroll and who can make changes separated. Because of turnover and short staff, one person's been doing it. We did put in compensating controls to where reports would be printed out before payroll was finalized. Finance director or accounting manager would review those. The changes would be reviewed against the supporting document that authorized those changes. So those were in place, but they still felt that we need to have those two functions separated. And I do agree with that. That is the best way to run this process. So I'm gonna work with the auditors and our staff to see who we can train on doing that and how we can change our process up so that this is taken care of. Number two, bank reconciliations. The auditors noted that for the majority of last fiscal year, the bank reconciliations were not prepared in a timely manner. Bank recs need to be done on a monthly basis. This is one of our basic, you know, internal controls. It's very important to get bank recs done on time. You do catch a lot of, if anything does go wrong, you catch it through your bank reconciliation. So they were not done timely. Now they are, since I've come in, everything's been done. Every month has been completed on a monthly basis with no issues. And then the non-compliance, per our Longdale Municipal Code, the quarterly investment report, the one we just covered is supposed to be presented to council on a quarterly basis. And I guess the first two quarters of last fiscal year were missed, were presented late. But again, since I've been here, I've been presenting those on time. The goal is that once the quarter is over, we do need time to get the bank statements in, but by the second meeting of the month, we should have those in, and that's usually when I'm gonna be reporting those. So those were the three on the internal control. They did issue also a management letter comment. Management letter comments are less severe than a significant deficiency, and also they did not notice any deficiency related to internal control. But they did note that we do not have a formal credit card policy. It is recommended that, we do have one, so staff and myself were working on getting one issued, made, and that will be coming soon. And then the final letter is the audit conclusion letter, and this is just their, you know, their basic final letter. This one is issued to city council, and it basically states that, you know, they did not have any major disagreements with management. We didn't have any problems with us. Our estimates are reasonable, disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear. And there is no disagreement and no difficulties with management. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the annual comprehensive financial report?
I just want to say that you did a great job coming in when we had the slug fill in that seat before. That came highly recommended from a former employee. You had to come in and finish his work. I compliment you on what you did.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, I will echo that as well. Great job leading the department. There's always, you know, always room, you know, room for growth, but what this spells is, spells out really in short order is the, the efficiency of, of the staff and the finance department, so I really appreciate that. No bad marks, you know, always, you know, room to twerk here and there, to tweak, I should say, don't do that. At least not in this venue. To tweak, you know, processes and procedures, so, so that's, that's normal, and that's, that's, you know, something that we can, you know, grow with. So that's why we have these annual reports, so that we can make sure that we don't run afoul of, you know, what's required from us, from the, well, it's from the state or the federal government, so that we're good stewards of the public's money and finances. So I really appreciate that, and kudos to you and the department.
And just wanted to add that when you came in, you came right before the budget season. Just, you know,
Yes.
did a great job, and we're, continue to be impressed here.
Absolutely.
Okay, with, with that, can we receive and file?
Let's receive and file.
Okay. With that, the report has been received and has been filed. Thank you, sir. Okay, with that, only ten more items to go. City manager's report.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'll be pretty quick. On the potholes on 166 in Pomona, Ahmad, can you talk to Dina? And please take care of that and work with her on that. And then also the signage issue. Gary, I know about the issues going on. Michael, can we have staff at night do some undercover? Uh, Garrett, I know about the issues going on. Uh, Michael, can we have staff at night do some undercover work and work tonight? Catch this gentleman that's been working that night. I know I'm aware of this out there doing mechanics in the streets. So if we can go out there and address that for the resident. Just so we know what's going on with the Fort to July, just have to let the council know now and might as well. Um, only one, only one vendor made it through the audit.
Oh, you're talking about, oh, that.
For the fireworks vendors, for the fireworks. So just the council's aware, only one has made it. We'll bring in something forward for the council to consider. But only one vendor has made it through. The rest of them failed. They did not meet the requirements under the code. Uh, let's see. Mr. Cruz, I'm sorry about the not getting the summary. We'll get him the summary and make sure the rest of the, uh, because we've been issuing a lot of refunds, but we do keep a detailed log. And, um, you know, from time to time, sometimes I have to get involved and look at the accounting and then make sure that people are not being overcharged. So we get them their refunds. So that's why I want to bring that up to the council. And then, um, the Metro, I've been working with the Metro from the subcommittee and they still have not released their dates, unfortunately. Um, so where I just emailed Mark today and, uh, the EIR is coming out on January twenty-sixth. It was supposed to be released next week on the twenty-third, but they've extended it to the twenty-sixth. Uh, we have met with, uh, several law firms and we're bringing the law firm for re- a recommendation to the council to consider, uh, because we need to bring a law firm on to address, uh, you know, to do our comment letter. Fortunately, we are lucky. We got lucky on this one. The, the comment period, it's not a typical forty-five days, it's sixty days. So we have time to put together, I'm already working with Jared, a comprehensive comment letter, uh, for Metro on that draft EIR. Homeless outreach, I want to give kudos to Michael. Um, so far, roughly about four members, homeless members of the, out, out in the street, out on Lon, out on Hawthorne Boulevard that we've engaged with, they've having some, accepted some level of services. I want to let everyone know that Michael goes out daily and he, twice a day, they go out and do homeless outreach and offer services. I guess they get tired of seeing Michael and myself as the backup. So they, four of them have accepted services. And one I will point to the council by the Giles property. Uh, she is actually one of our homeless, our actual homeless resident. Uh, she actually has been gone, we're pretty sure she's taken services. Um, another resident that I, uh, uh, council were calling in about in front of Haas Motors, she did take services. Um, we know a few of them have taken service and have come back. So right now we are looking at four to five folks that have taken services. Um, I, I understand that, uh, we do have a buildup over the weekend, so we're trying to address that. I was informed today also that the Janice is retiring from the Historical Society. So we'll have to bring something forward for the council for consideration, um, to see what you guys want to do with the, with continuing with the Historical Society or not. I think that's all the issues. Um, oh, the parking, just so the council's aware. I received many calls, complaints from residents calling council around the school areas. So when we don't, uh, enforce, the council get calls or the residents. And so unfortunately, um, we have to go out there and send parking enforcement. Obviously, we try to work with them and try to work with everyone. Sorry to hear that some people are getting cited. Uh, but we do try to do outreach and not just go and cite. I'll give you an example of environmental charter. Um, they're constantly blocking the street. All the residents down in that area complain because the buses are too wide and our streets are narrow. And so people calling complaint are really upset at the buses, blocking the, the residents from going to work. So it's, we are going to work with the school district, Longdale Elementary School District to come up with some solutions. But, uh, we do get a lot of complaints, just so the public knows. It's not staff just out looking for it. It's just that the residents complain. Um, the one mentioned about the person falling, one of the children, a child fell out of the car. That's what we understood happened. And we've been hearing that there's arguments and fights that go on out in front of the school. So sometimes we have to get involved because they're double parking. On the way this morning, I did see, uh, Mr., one of our parking enforcers, he was out over on one forty-seventh. The, the resident didn't care. They were sitting there. They stayed there, right over there by the condos there. They stayed there and, uh, one of our parking enforcer was just looking at the VIN number while the person was in the car. They just, they're just going to stay there. So they don't even move. So sometimes that happens. Unfortunately, we just have to, you know, move forward with enforcing. So those are all the comments I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for those comments. Okay, let's start with the councilwoman, Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman.
I want to start first with a couple of questions, uh, that maybe Sean or, um, leadership can go ahead and answer for me. The first one is a couple of council meetings back, we had some residents that all lived in the same apartment building, um, about one seventy-first. Can somebody give me an update on what is happening there?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council. Thank you. Uh, yes, regarding that property, um, we did have a member come in saying she had no heat. Um, we did inspection the very next day, myself and Officer Williams. Um, we met with the resident who made the complaint, as well as a number of other residents who weren't here that night, but also had similar complaints. Um, we confirmed that there was no heat. We also saw that, um, maintenance for the building was there doing some work that they shouldn't have been doing without permits, including putting in furnaces, which we made them get a permit for that day. Um, they also were doing some flat work, so we have an ongoing case for that. Um, and we had some concerns with how they were allowing drainage to be done. It looked like they were using, uh, the washouts to, to drain onto city streets. So, um, we're addressing all those concerns, um, in terms of the heat. Um, the furnaces they put in were still problematic, so it might be more than just the actual furnaces. It might be some venting issues. Um, but some of those problems, or in fact, all those problems are actually more for the county to enforce. We, we don't, uh, enforce any sort of issues regarding heating. So, um, we have been in contact with the city or the attorney that they represented and given them the information we can give him. Um, but, uh, we still are in contact with, with the property owners, but we do have an open case for the violations that we can enforce there.
Well, I was just concerned because of the fact that the residents didn't have any heat in their building and we're cold right now. So that was what brought it up to me today. Another thing is, where do, are we standing right now with intersection cameras that we spoke about?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. We, we were ready to go forward, uh, bring that to council. Uh, unfortunately, we had to pull it, um, because that's not a, a primary, um, user for the LASD. We confirmed that with the sheriff's department, so we have to do an RFP. Uh, certainly that the, the vendors out there, they can all apply and we can look at them. So we are bringing that forward. The RFP is being put together and then put out and then we'll, we'll bring it back for council consideration.
Okay. And the last one I have, can somebody from staff say something? I know that one of our schools, uh, in Longdale Elementary School this weekend had a problem with an alarm that has upset a whole lot of residents. Can somebody say out loud for those, uh, residents that are listening, what exactly, where do they go when this occurs?
Um, so we have residents contacted myself on Sunday. Um, there, the alarm kept going off on Roger Anderson for over twelve hours. Um, the residents, I, uh, they can contact Longdale Elementary School District. Um, or they can contact, you know, City of Longdale, talk, you know, email me. I monitor my emails, you know, seven days a week. I had, do have the direct contacts to the superintendent, the director of facilities, as well as, uh, the assistant superintendent now. So if we have this problem in the future, we have a way to reach out to them. Um, some of the residents can email Longdale Elementary School District board members as well. But again, it's a, uh, it's a board, it's the LASD's, uh, area, but we'll be happy to forward that information on. And now in the future, we have direct contacts and if it happens again, we can reach out directly.
All right. Thank you. And the last thing that I have is my calendar. Yes, I did get to go to Contract City, uh, event up in Sacramento for the last three, or last week for two and a half days. Absolutely an outstanding, um, presentation. Um, the first thing that I would like, just like to say, we, we listened to a young man and they told us before he got up to speak with us that we needed to hear him out, that sometimes, this gentleman has an, an opposite view as far as he is one of the writers of the Rena, Rena numbers. And right from the get-go, um, you could see everybody that sat there representing cities were like, "Rrrr." So it was a real, and we, and they, they told us, you know, sometimes we have to sit down and so that we can hear what the other side is stating. So we listened to that. I was really happy to hear, um, the day that all the senators and the assembly people came out to speak with us was the day that the governor put out his, um, budget. And I was really glad to hear, we had some people that were elected to office that not one of their cities that they represented were part of Contract Cities and yet they, there they were, still trying to educate and still trying to go forward with their relationship with Contract Cities. So I was very proud of, um, the people that got up on the rainiest day that you could ever imagine and come out and speak with us. Um, some of the things that they brought up while we were in that session was some cities are putting together a street takeover ordinance ahead of, um, the cities actually having those issues. Uh, I wanted to know if somebody could take a look and see, are we, are we as tight as we want to be there or is there any room for more languages in our ordinances that, uh, might be helpful in that event? And also, um, the loud mufflers. I am told that there could be an ordinance already written in either Redondo Beach or Manhattan Beach about loud mufflers. Is there any research that can be done on that? A lot of work from our senate and assembly people right now. Um, somebody I think just in the last council meeting mentioned tinted windows. And sure enough, they're talking about it on the state level. Um, at Contract Cities, on behalf of Contract Cities, it was said over and over and over again, local control. Keep our local control. Um, and I agree a hundred, a hundred percent with that. Um, one last thing that was brought up, before the pandemic, we celebrated a firefighter and a sheriff officer at a yearly, uh, award. And I think that kind of got tabled and it probably got tabled because the service organization that always sponsored that hasn't done anything. I would like to see if there is something that we can do to again, reactivate that, that our service people that are out there interacting with our residents are getting honored for the work that they do every day. That's it.
Thank you.
I have a list, but I'm going to read none of it.
Yes.
I did attend the Contract Cities, uh, Capitol Tour and the young man that Rhonda is talking about was an arrogant little ass. I'm talking about a donkey, you know, like an ass, yeah. He was arrogant. I thought he was going to get lynched when he walked out of the building. All you could hear is guns going click, 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 click. I mean, this guy was arrogant. Uh, he should have, you know, kept some of that under his belt and walked out peacefully. But the tour itself was great. We went to the Capitol. Senator Bradford took us around and it was fantastic. The rest of the stuff is badly so. I'll pass it on.
Councilwoman Suarez.
So I'll just report on this year. I'll leave twenty twenty-two in the past. Um, it, just one item I wanted to bring up actually, um, if we can discuss. I had a resident reach out to me and I guess they're, um, small family, young family. They're concerned about the cost of eggs, so they reached out to me about, um, the ability to have chickens. Um, and I guess in our city, we don't allow them. Um, they brought up, I think Hawthorne allows a certain amount. Redondo, you can have them with the permit. So I just, I guess I wanted to report on why, at what point was it not allowed and for what reason? I think it's non-domestic, um, just because I think this is, you know, nor, I, I don't know that that's going to solve their issues, but there is a trend of going towards more organic, um, you know, and, and self-sustainability. And so I guess that was just kind of taking a look at that and the reason why it was, um, not allowed. And maybe if we could look at, um, if there's an option to allow it, um, you know, with some implemented measures or protocols. And that's all I had.
They, some people have chickens because I hear the rooster in the morning.
Not roosters, just.
Well, but the chicken and the roosters sometimes, you know.
That's what happened.
Do you hear?
Oh, you want to report on that?
That's it.
I mean, tell you, one time I was looking for a place to rent and the reason why I didn't rent the place because the next door neighbors had a rooster. And I tell you, this was like in the middle of the day, that rooster was going off. You would think, I don't know if he got his, you know, sunset, sunrise is mixed, mixed up or whatever. And then I went back the next day just to, just to make sure, you know. Sure enough, the rooster was going off. I'm like, oh no. I am not living next door.
No, I'm not talking about the roosters. Just the, the hens or whatever.
Just the chickens, just the hens. Okay, okay, just the hens, okay. I just thought I would add that. Thank you. Anyway, nothing against the roosters. Go ahead.
All right. Um, last Thursday I attended the Asian Organization Alliance and Chinese Enterprise, uh, Chamber of Commerce. Um, and supervisor Solis was there, did the presentation, very nice, um, brief inauguration. And I hope the Asian-American community of Longdale joins their, um, enterprise chambers. Um, they do a lot of good work for the community. So if we have Asian-American entrepreneurs, this is, joining this, uh, organization is, uh, it's a good thing. Um, I have a question for municipal services, I guess, or someone that could help us figure out why Rosegrance and Condon, every time it rains, one of the lanes floods and you, when you turn right onto Condon, you splash whoever's walking or crossing the street. Um, it's been going on for years and I could never figure out why. It just floods that corner and it takes one full lane. Um, and it goes into the business. Uh, this past rain week, it went into the business. So if we could look into that, um, could we look in or could we give our citizens more information about the big trash or bulk trash pickup? I keep seeing people on a Monday put couches and sofas and things like that. And then Wednesday comes along and whatever they put out, it's in pieces and our consolidated people struggle putting all that in their trucks. So we need to remind our citizens about their free pickups. They could call anytime and get that free pickup. If that's possible, maybe have consolidated, do a presentation again of bulky items pickup. But it seems like it's always, or the areas I haven't seen them on is Condon right up in front of Billy Mitchell and then on one forty-seventh all the way to City Hall. We used to have certain trashcans in, in major streets by bus stops. Some of them are not there. Have we replaced all of them?
We can take a look at, we can take a look at that. Uh, I know we replaced them all with new ones, but we can go back. Maybe someone's, maybe they've been moved and we can take a look at it.
One forty-seventh and Inglewood used to have a trashcan there. A car crashed into it, a trashcan disappeared and it's not there anymore. Unless I missed it turning right and I didn't see it. It's right by the apartment buildings.
We'll take care of it.
And then, um, is there any update on the Chamber of Commerce coming out and speaking to us and giving us a report on what they've done in twenty twenty-two? Because I requested that a while back.
We, we received the response. It's a great question, Mayor and Council, or response. And they said at this time, they're, they're, they don't see a need in, in presenting to the city.
Well, they represent the city and our businesses, so I feel that they need to come and give us a report. I don't know if I'm, I'm wrong, but it's their, other cities have Chamber of Commerce involved with the city. I would like to see who's part of their membership and who they're working with. Um, also, how, on December fifteenth, we had the general plan update. Did we have many citizens attending it or did, was it just for attendance?
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman. Um, so we did have, uh, the notice of preparation meeting on December sixteenth. Unfortunately, nobody attended the meeting. We were there for about almost an hour. Unfortunately, nobody attended the meeting. We were there for about almost an hour and a half. We did run through the presentation. We did upload it on the website. We do have it on our Longdale website, and we have it on our general plan website if anybody would like to see it. Our NOP comment period has already ended. So right now, we're preparing the traffic study and the financial documents portion of, for the economic development element of the general plan. And once we have something ready, we'll let everybody know when the draft environmental impact report is available and if anybody has any comments. We're still receiving them now, but it's already ended comment period. We only received two comment letters, one from SCAG and the other one from the Water District.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And my last thing, so, because we all want to go home. I want to thank Michael and his team for the homeless outreach. You guys are doing a great job getting less calls from neighbors about the homeless, which is a good thing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I only have a few, few items. I'll, like the councilwoman, I'll leave 2022 in the past. But I did attend the city selection committee meeting where Mayor Butts was ratified as the representative for, for the, they call it MTA for some reason, but we know it as Metro for the South Bay and West Side area. So he will continue to be our representative on the Metro Board. So of course, he's one of the members we'll be meeting with to petition our issue with the C-line. I also attended the LA County Federation of Laborer Martin Luther King Jr. Breakfast, which was Monday. It was, it didn't rain. A lot of people thought it was going to rain, and their absence was noted. I'm looking at, I'm looking at her because she always goes. No, right, right. But, but we had a good, good time remembering the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and, and all the, the working men and women of the union. We appreciate all their hard work. We know it's a strong union movement with Dr. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr., so I attended that. The last thing I have, actually going to adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of Miriam Grims. She's one of our long-term residents, participated in the senior, the senior lunch program, as well as the senior advisor committee she was on for a long time. She's recently passed. And actually is having her services tomorrow at Inglewood Park Cemetery. I think that's at 11:00 a.m. I'm there in Inglewood, so we'll adjourn in her memory. And with that, I think that's all we have. Yep, yep, yep. All right. Okay, the next regular scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at 6:30 p.m. on Monday, February 6. And these here chambers, it is now 9:04, and this meeting is adjourned.